Ahead in call to order the regular meeting two of Swatara Township Board of Commissioners. It's October eighth, twenty twenty five at seven fifteen P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty in which we are all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Secretary Savage, could you do roll call, please? Commissioner Taki.
Here.
Commissioner Zubek.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Vice President Steele.
Here.
President Ellis.
Here.
Madam President, you have your form. Thank you. This board did not have an executive session prior to the meeting. Uh, we're up to item six, introduction of Officer Carson Moret. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Salford.
President, good evening, everyone. Just take a couple of minutes out of the agenda to introduce one of our newest, uh, police officers, Officer Carson Moret. Carson graduated from West Perry High School in two thousand and sixteen. He worked in the service industry until being hired by our police department on January second of this year. Officer Moret attended the one hundred and twenty-six PAC Municipal Police Academy, graduating on June twenty-third of this year. Officer Moret has been assigned to the patrol division and he's currently completing the field training program under the supervision of Officer Ritter, who is in the back of the room here, under the watchful eye of Officer Ritter. Once Officer Moret successfully completes his field training, and he will successfully complete it, right? All right, he'll be assigned to B platoon. So just wanted to welcome Carson aboard officially. It's been several months, but I just wanted to get a chance to introduce him to everyone on the board and everyone in public, so. Carson, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're up to item seven, recognition of Mr. Sean Gold for donations made for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five Labor Day fireworks events. And Commissioner Connolly, you can.
I probably should have checked before we started the meeting. Do we actually have? We'll get it to you, but we're going to recognize you anyway. I thought about that. You're going to be recognized for, uh, outstanding public service to Swatara Township. And, um, the background on this is, uh, Mr. Gold is a, is a business owner in Steelton Borough. And he has been volunteering, uh, and contributing to many, uh, events, uh, nonprofits, community outreach programs. And as we were putting together our Labor Day fireworks event in twenty twenty-four, we were facing, um, some weather issues and there's a lot of events that go on on Labor Day. So, uh, tents were relatively hard to get. We had some of a certain size. He, on his way to and from his business, passes the twenty-five acre Bishop Park area where the, uh, event was held. Um, I'm personal friends with him. We've collaborated on some, uh, food relief, uh, backpack giveaways, other, other things like that. Uh, that involved, uh, multiple communities, uh, mainly Steelton Harrisburg and Swatara High Spire. And, uh, I remembered that he had had an event and he saw that we were having an event and at his event, he had a very large tent. So, um, we had a conversation about the event that was coming up and I had a question about a large tent that he had used for one of his outdoor events. Uh, right away, he said that he could, uh, provide the tent and manpower to put it up. I don't know the dimensions, but I'm going to say it was the biggest tent we had and it was a, a very big tent. And, uh, that was one of the three tents that he let us use, uh, for people that attended the event or saw, uh, videos or postings on Facebook. That first year, we did have weather issues. We had rain and, uh, we had a dry place for people attending the event in, in the lower area of the, uh, twenty-five acre side of the Bishop Park. But we also had a huge tent at the top for all of the public safety professionals that were there keeping us safe. And the weather, uh, was bad from about four to six, but it cleared up and we had in, an incredible, uh, fireworks show. I want to add one other thing. He had a thirty-six foot Stay Puft Marshmallow Inflatable. I'm not sure why, but he had one of those and it was in the trailer with the tents. And he said, you have any use for this? Well, we put that thing up, uh, on the, on the top of the hill and it turned into an incredible, uh, photo opportunity. Um, it had no purpose other than it was cool. And that was twenty-four, so we appreciate that. We're a little late with our thank you, but he still, uh, offered the tent and other tents for twenty-five where we had incredibly dry weather, uh, on, on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The same tents served the same purposes and provided shade and coolness for people that were out there, uh, during the event, so. Um, I'd like to recognize Sean Gold. Uh, we'll do this if you want to, Mr. Gold, there's a microphone in, in front and you can, you can say something. Um, if you don't want to, we're going to ask that you come up. Okay, when you're, when you're done speaking, um, uh, we, you come center, we'll get the commissioners together. We'll thank you and, uh, I will deliver your certificate of appreciation to your business.
Uh, no worries. Now I'm always, uh, so impressed, uh, by, uh, Swatara Township being a leader in, uh, Dauphin County and, uh, your community events are, uh, second to none. And, uh, you know, I see the community, you know, just embrace them. So, uh, it's an honor for me to be able to contribute, um, to anything you guys do and, uh, you know, support you guys. So thank you for, uh, recognizing that and, uh, anything else I can do to help, please let me know.
We appreciate it. Thank you. If you do front and center, we'll, uh, um, Charles Neal. Sir, orange with the camera tonight. See a lot of other things on the. Should we all go out there? Um, and for the public, the new, the room has been, uh, newly renovated, so, um, I remember saying one of our first photo ops.
Doing an excellent job, Scott.
All right, we are up to item eight, visitors' requests and comments. Um, before we go into regular comments, um, we do have Mr. Eric Turman here, uh, from the Central Dauphin School District. He is the superintendent and he wanted to come and speak about item fourteen that is on our agenda tonight.
So, good evening, uh, appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes. Uh, so what I'd like to do is to talk about the LSA, the LSA grant. Um, this is something where we have, um, looked at Swatara Township and also Laura Paxton to really help us go after our middle schools. So in your packet, you have a proposal. You also have letters of support from the community. We are really trying to go after math and science in the district. So right now we have kids who are at the high school level, struggling in Algebra One, struggling in Biology. And we can't start at the high school level. We need to start earlier than that. So we really want to look at some progressive solutions to the problem. And like right now for the Keystone Exam, only sixteen percent of our high school kids are passing that exam. And if you know anything about Algebra One, it's the gatekeeper for science and it's the gatekeeper for when kids get into college. So having an opportunity to visit two or three local colleges with that Penn State, that ship, making my way down to Millersville. And the number one struggle is we have kids who are leaving Central Dauphin, who are going to post-secondary and they are spending their first year of remedial courses. So everything you wanted them to have before they get there, they are now having to take again when they get to college. So financially, that definitely puts a strain on the student and also the family. So trying to dig into what are some of the root causes? One of those is engagement. Uh, you now have kids who are wanting to engage more with their phone than they do with learning. So one of the things we'd like to tackle is we have these huge libraries at all four middle schools. And when you start to look at what library is now compared to what it was thirty years ago, it's not the same. The Dewey Decimal System, all those things that we had where we looked up books, right now you can get on your phone and find a book in five seconds. Um, so we have all these antiquated large spaces in buildings that are starting to become overcrowded. And when you start to think through, what could we be aggressive in in our approach in order to engage kids to do a couple of things? One, really go after math, science and technology. Two, prepare them better for high school. Three, prepare them better for post-secondary. Four is we are looking to in the future to create academies and pathways at both of our high schools and prepare kids for STEM-related fields so that when they go to college and they graduate, they can come right back to Dauphin County and work and live in the area. That's really the cycle we like to create. Obviously that's going to take a long time to get to that point, um, but this will be potentially a starting point. So we would like for the, to potentially have the township go after the LSA grant for us. Um, obviously we would need you to take the lead. I had the resolution, resolution is already done, so I can give that to you. Resolution's already completed. I can send that to you electronically. Um, but really I see this as a partnership between the district and the township because we both want the same thing. We both want our kids to have a quality education. We want both, both, we all want our kids to be prepared for post-secondary and we all want our kids to be productive citizens. And these are one area that we know across the board in the district, kids are really struggling with at this point. So one step in the right direction, um, is something that the district financially, um, really with all the challenges we have and the things we need to do, we would never get to something like this. Um, we get into the point where we are just trying to fund the things you have to do and we really never get a chance to fund the things we really want to do for kids. So that's what we are, that's what I'm proposing to you this evening. And, uh, if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have?
I just.
Commissioner Taki.
That's all right. Definitely, I can wait. I just, you go ahead. I just, I just have a comment for you. Um, myself and Commissioner Connolly were just swearing in and, um, I'm, I'm Miss Portmenee, but what's her last name? Jeannie. It was her last name. Webster, she's a Portmenee. And she says, and Tom, you'll remember this, but he says to me, he said, we had an awesome superintendent down there that we're about to hire. She said he's, uh, innovative, he's, uh, forward-thinking. And I've been watching you since you've gotten sworn in that first day that me and Commissioner Connolly were sitting in that back room. And the things that you were doing for the children, especially, you know, in some of the economically depressed neighborhoods where, you know, me and Taylor are probably the youngest on the board. I'm the youngest, she's, she's next to me. Uh, but in our area, and we both went to Swatara. I don't know about anyone else that they went to Swatara because I think it was a one-room shack at that time, so they're much older than us. But I got to enjoy the remodel, so I know exactly what the building looks like, the layout and the things that need to be done. Um, one of my, my, my last born child next year will benefit from the all-day kindergarten. And now my, uh, second to last, uh, youngest is benefiting from the remodel at Chambers Hill and she, she now has air conditioning. You know, things of this nature, but, um, for you to come in, I think you're only fresh, you're not, you're a year and a half here, maybe? A little over?
Correct.
I mean, what you are doing, because that's sort of like a government entity itself, is revolutionary. Keep up the good work. You have my hundred percent support behind this because I see what you're doing and it's about the community. It's about the children, it's about their learning. And what you're doing is not segregated only in a certain area. You're doing this across the whole entire district. That's unheard of because that wasn't like that when I was at East High. That wasn't like that when I was at Swatara. That wasn't like that when I was at Tri-Community. Keep up the good work. I think, I don't know if you get that from your board or you hear that much in public. You're doing, you're doing a damn good job, man. Keep it up, okay?
Thank you.
Commissioner Taki?
Yes, um, I was just curious, I appreciate what you're doing and there's a lot of good things going on. You said sixteen percent are passing now?
Yeah.
What's being done for the students before this level? Is there any programs or something you're working on to try to help these other students out?
So the first thing we're doing right now is a curriculum audit. So we will have the audit results back probably within the next month. What that's going to guide us to do is see where are our gaps or where are, as adults, how are we struggling with the parent kids? So that's the first place you have to start. The unfortunate part with this stuff is as competitive as I am and I want to solve things tomorrow in a system this big, you're going to have to really get it to a point where you make sure you get it right. So we are right now going to go through an audit that'll be done. Then we're going to see from a curriculum standpoint, let's take Algebra One as an example. What are we not teaching well or what are we not preparing kids well for? And not only at high school, you got to go all the way back to like elementary school. There are algebra terms that you learn in elementary school that prepare you and lead, guide you to when you get to ninth, tenth grade and you are now in an Algebra One course. Once you do that, now you got to go through curriculum writing, rewrite curriculum. Once you do that, now you got to look at all your materials and see whether or not do we have a right textbook? Maybe the textbook we have is not for parent kids. Do we have the right material? So there's a process to it and then the other part to that, there's a cost to it. So if we end up going in another direction with materials, I tell you, a textbook for ninth grade across the district prior run you about a million and a half. That's just for a book.
Right.
So unfortunately, um, you have to kind of lay the groundwork for the future and what it's going to look like. Um, it's hard just to step back and, and as a leader, just be okay with that. But I also know that, uh, there's not much you can do until I got the roadmap for where, how, where we need to go. So we'll have that within the next month. Once we get that roadmap, it'll clearly tell us where we need to go.
Excellent. Good question.
Okay. Um, I do want to say thank you for your efforts. This is extremely exciting. Um, I know, uh, I've seen firsthand, you know, my son went to Swatara Middle and I've, I'm always one of those people that, that question. I, I think we all have questioned at times whether or not we're using all of the spaces in our schools appropriately. So I appreciate your efforts to take that maybe not as much used space and, and make it into something really innovative. Um, I do, I would be interested in seeing, um, if, if that audit actually includes pre-COVID versus post-COVID. Because I know a lot of people don't really think a year or two makes a difference, but I think it makes a huge difference, um, in a child's development and learning. And so I think that would be really an interesting number to have.
Okay.
But I do want to thank you.
I can give you a little bit of information on that. Let's, the audit is going to look at your curriculum and that's basically what the teachers are instructing them doing. But I will tell you that there was one piece of data that I kind of wondered when I got here and I stayed on how kids are doing in terms of graduation from college. And this is not a number based on all the kids, this is based on the kids who go. So at C D High School and East High School, before COVID, seventy-three percent of the kids graduated in four years from C D and about thirty-seven percent of the kids from East High School graduated in four years. We are now down to fifty-six percent in twenty-nine.
So there was a difference.
There is a difference. So, and these are kids who are actually going to college and only fifty-six percent of the kids in the Central Dauphin side are graduating in four years. And when the twenty-nine percent of the kids on the east side are graduating in four years. So you're almost down to a half and a third. So that's not a kid problem. That's an adult problem and we as adults have to figure out how we solve that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I have a couple of things. Number one, uh, we, we just saw evidence, clear evidence that, um, STEM programs could help one of the commissioners up here because of the, the numbers that Mr. Steele put out were inaccurate. He's not familiar with the, the less than and greater than sign and obviously his rounding uh, to the nearest hundred years isn't very good because, uh, as the oldest person here, I did not go through a one-room, uh, school. And, um, I'm pretty sure that he is not younger than the president of the Board of Commissioners. So I just want to clear that up. So obviously you've demonstrated, um, that there is a need. Uh, but, um, ju-just for a way of explanation, if I say anything wrong, you, you could jump in. Uh, these grants wouldn't be eligible to a school district to apply for without the, the sponsoring local municipality. So that's our goal here. So you, you have a good project plan, don't need us for any of that. But you need us to make sure you're eligible for the program.
Correct.
So that's, uh, obviously we're going to vote, I'm speaking for myself, and for me, that's an easy decision. Um, I do want to touch on some partnerships and, um, as Commissioner Steele said, uh, we, we went to the school board meeting that night, uh, with a different feeling than what we had when we left. Uh, we went to the school board meeting because we represent Swatara Township. And for a long time, we felt that Swatara Township was kind of an afterthought on the east side of the, of the school district. And Laura Paxton's the, the bigger, uh, population area and the political part of the school district tended to divide, uh, at a minimum. It was nine members, so five-four represented and came out of the Central Dauphin side and sometimes six-three, depending on how the, how the boundary went. And that's not the political party. I was saying that's how the geographic area went. So, um, I did not go to school in the Central Dauphin School District, but, uh, my children did. So I was on the PTA at Tri-Community, Swatara Middle, Middle School in C D East. And I spent a lot of time before I was commissioner fighting for students in, in our community. So, uh, Commissioner Steele has, has, uh, five children and, you know, I, I have grandchildren that will be, uh, next year, one of them will be at that school. So, um, at the time we were there, we didn't know about that school. We didn't know about all the positive things that were going to happen in, in Swatara Township. So, uh, just like you had, uh, my support and the, and the collective board support for the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten here in Swatara Township. And if the public doesn't know this, that serves Swatara Township. It serves all the elementary schools in Swatara Township. This, this is a one-of-a-kind thing for Swatara Township. We have a population similar to other communities, um, very much mirror Sesquahanna in a lot of ways. Sesquahanna has a school district. So Sesquahanna has that, uh, town, community feel. They have the facilities of an entire school district. They, they have high school facilities. We do not in Swatara Township. Our, uh, school is the middle school, Swatara Middle School. We don't have C D East, we don't, we don't have Central Dauphin. And as a person that coached sports and, you know, was, was involved in all those activities, that makes life tough for your community when you feel like you're an outsider in the school district, but you're part of the school district. So appreciate everything you're doing. Um, I do want to touch on, uh, that the amount here is, is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven. Um, I, I feel like you shouldn't even have to go through this process. Somebody should give you that money without all the paperwork and the effort, but we know that, um, you're, you're going to, to do everything you need to do. I expect when, when we get that item, that, that you'll get, um, the support from the board to do that. And, uh, I'm looking forward to the, the results. But I do want to touch on one other thing and I want to keep everybody, because I know you probably want, want to get out of it too. But, um, we started something on the first day of school and if I say something and you say I'll stop talking, but, um, yesterday, uh, very close to here, we had, we had a very, uh, serious incident that involved, um, Steelton High Spire School District, which is one hundred percent in the boundaries of those, those, uh, school buildings are in the boundaries of Swatara Township. So, um, we provide police protection, fire protection, um, the, the streets that they cross when they're going into school and the sidewalks that they walk on for the last leg of that journey is in Swatara Township. So, uh, we, we had a lot of things to be concerned about there. But I want to touch on the fact that you were so proactive and people don't necessarily know this yet because the program's still being rolled out. But on the first day of school in Swatara Township, in partnership with Central Dauphin School District and, um, obviously you're, you are the top, you're the decision-maker. So, uh, we had a police officer, armed police officer on the first day of school enter a school bus and go to Tri-Community Elementary School. Wasn't to arrest anybody, it wasn't to monitor the, the bus driver. It is a program to let people know that we're serious about the safety of our children and that the police will, are, will be there for them. And that is being worked on with Superintendent Salford, the school district, and we're, we're eventually going to be meeting with the other entities, um, to see how, you know, how it works with the school district. But that, that's an incredible program that didn't come about because of violence or bad behavior or somebody speeding by a school district. It came about with conversations, uh, school director, uh, Jeannie Webster was heavily involved about what can we do to build bridges, make our community safe and be proactive? Because as the program comes out and is publicized, people won't know what bus. It's just an extra level of protection, um, what we would provide and it builds partnerships and friendships. The, the young lady that, uh, was the student who got on the bus was proud as can be. Um, you know, we, we took some pictures, we're, we're waiting till we, we talk to all the municipal, um, partners. But, uh, I, I, I thank you for being forward-thinking because a lot of times there's conflicts between, uh, school districts, municipalities, police departments, things like that. And, um, you're, you're, you're definitely And, um, you're, you're, you're definitely on the right track from a Swatara Township resident perspective, from a Central Dolphin School District taxpayer perspective that, that's been around the district for a lot of years. So, um, I'll be quiet and just say thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do appreciate that and, um, I just know that, you know, we changed our logo and, uh, I don't know if people know the, the premise and why we did that, but, um, it was always just C D and the apple. But we changed that to have both logos. But anytime I speak to anybody, I always say, I need Superintendent to be Central Dolphin School District. Just so people understand that, don't take this the wrong way. I don't care where the kids live, I don't care what township you're in, I'm in charge of twelve thousand five hundred kids and I will look out for each and every one of them. You know, some of them have different needs, but we have to do something different over here than over here. At the end of the day, that's okay. Um, as long as they all get an opportunity to even the playing field and they all have an opportunity to be successful, it's all that matters.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, before you walk away, I just wanna say thank you for taking the time to come again. Um, I appreciate you reaching out today and asking about the time for the meeting. Um, and I'm very thankful for the direction that you and the school board are taking. And it's, it's going to benefit, uh, the kids that will get to experience these new updates and things like that. Um, and ultimately it's going to help all of us too, uh, because we'll have kids that are coming out prepared, ready to potentially go to college and if not, prepared to go into careers and things like that. And, and they'll have the education that they deserve. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night. All right, we're still at visitors' requests and comments. Uh, if you'd like to come forward, state your name and address, um, as well as write it down and then you may begin.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Schenk with McNeese, Wallace and Merrick. I'm here this evening on behalf of Triple Crown Corporation and P A Business Center, L P. Mark DeSanto is with me this evening. He is the president of Triple Crown. I was before this board at your meeting last week to bring to your attention a situation related to a building at ten sixty-five High Spire Road that we are seeking certificates of occupancy and building permits for. This is a building that is a roughly eighty thousand, uh, square foot flex building. It's been constructed, it's ready for occupancy and we've been unable to receive those permits. I won't reiterate everything that I shared with you at the last meeting, but I did just want to bring out some additional details that we learned in the last week since we spoke with you and also to give Mr. DeSanto an opportunity to address the board. We had asked that this matter would be on your agenda tonight for consideration. I understand that the decision was made not to include it, but I do just wanna bring some of these things to your attention again. Uh, first of all, I did have an opportunity to, uh, watch the planning commission meeting that took place last night and I knew several of you were present there. There was discussion about this project and, and frankly, some of that discussion included an admission from the zoning officer that this building does not appear to be an office building. And I wanna reiterate that a permit was issued for this building, plans were submitted to the township. It has been constructed, substantial money has been spent, uh, to bring this building out of the ground. And to simply say, well, you know, too bad, we're not gonna allow you to occupy it after all that money is spent is, is certainly a problem for my client and legally speaking as well. We also had the opportunity to review some of the materials that we submitted to the township throughout the planning process. There was a traffic study that was done in twenty-twenty-three. As I believe was mentioned at the planning commission meeting last night, there was a change to orientation of the building and the access that required a modification of the plan. That traffic study, which I had the chance to review in the course of the past week explicitly identified this as a warehouse use. Um, and we were required to enact ordinances and post-signage specifically limiting certain turning movements uh, on the adjoining street network on Foley Mill Road related to trucks over forty feet in length. And there was extensive discussion about the truck traffic that was gonna be generated by this project and how that was gonna be handled on the road network. So again, I just wanted to bring those two additional factors to your attention. Um, our request remains that you would direct your zoning officer to issue the permit in this case. Barring that, however, as you know, there is a zoning hearing scheduled for the end of this month in this matter. And so we would ask at a minimum that you support that application so that we can move forward and get our tenants in the building. So I'll turn it over to Mr. DeSanto and let him make some remarks as well.
Good evening, board. Mark DeSanto, as Claudia said, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. I'm gonna try not to reiterate what she said, but I have been involved in this process since the beginning. And we followed the process a hundred percent as the township requested via their ordinances, via their rules and regulations. We have a zoning letter from the previous zoning engine, um, zoning officer that said flex, storage and distribution was a permitted use. We submit our subdivision land, um, development plan and the plan showed approximately twenty-seven dock doors, truck parking area. And it was, it'd be, um, it, you could not say this was not going to be a flex, storage, distribution with office associated with it. When we submitted the building permit, which now takes this two-D picture to a three-D picture, it showed approximately twenty-seven dock doors, single-story, twenty-four-foot-high clear building. You could not have issued that building permit not assuming that this was going to be a flex, storage, distribution facility. For the last two years, we've had a sign with C I R on Eisenhower Boulevard saying, "Flex Warehouse Storage Release." No one stopped and said, that's, you can't do that here. And when you look through the documents, through the, um, the meeting, the meeting minutes, the discussions on the, uh, videos, warehouse is mentioned, flex is mentioned, storage is mentioned, distribution's mentioned. The plan says office and ancillary use on the face, but that's, that's the engineer's position. It's not the legal description and it wasn't an approval of what the zoning officer gave. Um, for the new zoning officer to come in here and unilaterally overturn the previous zoning officer's position in four years of work and the building is constructed and the best of light is irresponsible. There's eleven million dollars standing on that ground right now, not being utilized. There's two tenants that exist in this township that worked, been in the township up to sixteen years that want to expand their businesses in these buildings. One's on Eisenhower Boulevard, the other one's on Dairy Street. Eisenhower Boulevard just wants to move further up on Eisenhower Boulevard where we are. Um, so it's significant economic damage that's occurring here. And it's happening very quickly, these tenants, one's under significant, uh, timeframe. They're just, they must vacate their building. If they don't go here, then go somewhere else. So I believe that, um, these two tenants, they're important to the township, the employee people. They're helping paying tat, real estate taxes here and it's significant economic damage to us. With the construction that's there and allow us to get to the point where the building is ready to be occupied. Under the law, there's a term called vested rights. Even if for some reason it could be interpreted, it's not a permitted use, even though the original zoning officer said it is. We have vested rights to utilize this building for what it was built for. Um, you know, I, I think the government's here to help us and, you know, today I would ask and I respectfully ask this board to first over, ask, d- direct the zoning officer to recant the decision that this isn't a permitted use. Time is of the essence here for us. Even if we get to the zoning hearing board on the twenty-eighth, we may not make a decision, gonna go to the November meeting. That decision is then not, is appealable, I believe, or it's thirty days after that. We couldn't, may not even get this thing resolved until December or January and we're gonna lose one of the tenants. So I think that's a reasonable request. Alternatively, as Claudia said, we would at least, at the least, ask that this board, um, send a letter of support to the zoning hearing board that this should be recognized, the affirmative on our request and the building permit should be released. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are some, but I wanted to just kinda direct this. I was out of town at the last meeting and unable to attend, but I've been here since day one. I know the whole process. We have all the documents and I know what we're asking for. Legal, it's right and it was permitted. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any, um, questions per se, but I do recall many of the details that were stated in his statement. And it is very hard for me to sit here and just ignore a business that was built in our township when other businesses have been allowed. And so I just wanna state for the record for this board that I won't sit here in silence. And I believe that if the building was built for that purpose, then it should be allowed to produce economic revenue for our township. There are people, members of this board that have no problem with data centers and other warehouses and all kinds of stuff. But then someone builds a building, they put all that money into it. I remember the conversation about the trucks and the turning radiuses and everything else. And so I won't sit here in silence as much as somebody, some people might like me to. I think that it deserves a fair assessment and decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go on to see if anyone else has visitors request, you and me, go ahead.
I agree with what Commissioner Zudeck just said, uh, we were here throughout the whole process. And, uh, what I'd like to know, or what I would like, you said you have correspondence with the former co-enforcement officer?
Yes.
Would you be, uh, able to send it to all the board members, please?
I'd be happy to and that was all submitted to the, uh, president's zoning officer.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll actually s- give you the entire application so you can see it all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time?
Hi, Jean, how are you?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You did, you prepared.
Um, okay to start now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, I'm Jean Stilp, I'm, uh, with no team, I restart. Um, everybody here at the, uh, at the board here is a, uh, is a driver. And how often do you, uh, go down the highway and you, uh, all of a sudden go to make a turn and all of a sudden there's somebody over there who's in your blind spot? Okay, we've all experienced that, okay. Right now, um, and you say, uh, you say, uh, I'm glad I didn't make that turn, I'm glad I got hit. Right now, we're all, we're all looking at the, um, Three Mile Island, we're learning that it wants to reopen. And, uh, right now it's a lot, it's in the blind spot of most citizens in the area, okay? They know a little bit, they don't know it all. Just to reiterate, uh, a year ago, Constellation Energy said they made a deal with Microsoft that reopened Three Mile Island and sell all the energy to Microsoft, their data centers in Northern Virginia. Um, and, uh, right here, um, we have to, uh, live with the seven hundred tons that have already been produced. They wanna put in another three hundred fifty, uh, thousand ton, three hundred fifty more tons of high-level nuclear waste. Anyhow, uh, U S supervisors, every day you have to deal with possibility of school shootings, school lockdowns, public shootings, crimes, family disputes, nearby chemical accidents, train derailments, fires, floods, snow weather emergencies, child predators, unforeseen risks. Your job unfortunately is to make sure the usual township duties of policing, public safety and street repair, property management, taxation, and anything else involved and the township runs smoothly. But also you have to prepare for those risks, uh, that are, that are, I mentioned above. In the areas where you can minimize the eliminate or eliminate risk, that is the path you're supposed to follow. If there's something, uh, you see something, say something, do something. This brings us to Three Mile Island and the evacuation of the entire area. In regard to Three Mile Island, I'm not talking about pro-nuclear, anti-nuclear, I'm talking about, uh, risk. Um, where you get, and you wanna say in the matter. While evacuation plans are necessary for var- various emergency situations as listed above, evacuations for radioactive emergencies are a category all of their own. These events to me, evacuating the entire area for long-term removal and widespread area and the possibility of not removing. Um, what you don't realize is that the, um, the, uh, basically evacuation is impossible. And, uh, just thinking evacuating the area hospitals and, and, uh, Children's Cancer Center, Penn State, Hershey Medical, neonatal units and also evacuation of high-rises residents and, uh, nursing homes, new street, nursing schools and many similar, similar facilities. I've listed all those in the back. Guess what? The problem is that you do not have to, um, you do not have to follow. You have the opportunity to say no to, uh, Three Mile Island's reopening. You can actually not take that risk. Uh, risk is there, you say, uh, you get to choose. Um, so today I don't wanna take a lot of time, I put a lot of, pay a lot of, uh, information there for you to, uh, look at. I just wanna say that, uh, evacuation is, um, of, uh, for Three Mile Island is insane, it just doesn't work. And the bottom line is that you're not required to. Uh, talk to your attorneys, find out the bottom line of, are we required to do this? If you, uh, choose that you wanna do this, why shouldn't you get something for it? Uh, Constellation and Microsoft get all this money for you taking the risks. I wanna say to Microsoft, uh, Constellation Energy, hey, if you want us to participate, how about twenty-five million for the township? You know, um, like the old, uh, uh, like the old mafia said in the, in the, uh, in the, in the movies, uh, make them, make them an offer they can't refuse. They need you to have an evacuation plan. If you don't have it, uh, then, uh, then they, they can't do what they wanna do. But evacuation plans are just about impossible. Anyhow, there's a million other questions, I don't wanna take a lot of your time. Uh, so, uh, I packed a lot of information here and I'll be sending you more information. I just wanted you to note on the, um, pages that shows the evacuation plan, there'll be a new evacuation plan coming out. Apparently, uh, that's what Constellation said, uh, that come to be out in December. So, but it can't be too much different than this, okay? Where your, your students have to go to one area, your students the other area. And all I can say is that in this day and age, our populations have increased since, uh, the last time this place was o- open. Um, that, uh, this six-year-old plant, uh, uh, really has to, you have to realize that you do not have to do dance to the dictates of Constellation and Microsoft. So, uh, I'll leave you with that, but there's a lot of information there. I'll be sending you more and, uh, more thoughts, but, uh, thanks for taking the time. I'm Jean Stilp from, uh, Fish Creek Valley Road and, uh, I'll leave you with that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel one more meeting, so hope you don't mind if I leave, but, uh, it's quite a new facility you have here and it's not easy to be here.
Probably smart.
Is that?
It's probably smart.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item nine. Uh, I'll enter Jean a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, second.
Motion in a second, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed. Item ten, motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I have some, I have some comment. Um, for the same reasons that I stated in prior meetings. Uh, one, I don't think that the chief needs an assistant at fifty-two thousand dollars a year um, after we provided a thirty-two percent increase last year. Um, and we have another budget round coming and so I'm gonna stick with that. Um, also, uh, we have in our treasures report, um, I see that, you know, we're, we're down in the treasure in the, um, general fund and we could wait till we actually pass a budget, um, to address some of these additional staff costs. And I know some commissioners on the board have expressed concerns regarding, um, prior staff hires. I think that those, that those concerns should carry forward. Um, and this is something that should be taken on, if anything, um, next year. Um, so for that reason, um, and for the reasons I stated last week, with just the increased cost, I am a no on item C. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other discussion at this time?
I don't. Go ahead. Just watch her.
Yeah, go.
Um,
Um, interestingly enough, uh, when, when I came on the board in '24, um, I was given, uh, a list of items from the Fire Service Board. Uh, I oversee public safety, so I oversee fire. And in the, uh, committee chair position, I'm also, uh, the committee chair of fire, and I hold a seat on that, on that fire safety board. One of the main items on the list that I was given from the prior two years was this coordinator position. So, um, that was in January of '24. Uh, we worked through that, uh, identified the position, um, came up with a job description, and we have, uh, interviewed candidates, and, um, the name of the person on here is a minimum 30-plus-year firefighter that has served this township well. Uh, he's perfect for the, the job. Um, had nothing to do with the application process or, or the interviews, so, um, I'm pleased that, that, that he made it through. And obviously, I, I'm gonna vote yes on that. But the irony in the whole thing here is when I came on the board in '24 and received the information that this is the direction we were heading, the person who held those two positions before me was Commissioner Zubek, the Chair of Fires.
Commissioner Connolly, come on, that's a stretch.
No, no, you were, you were the committee chair.
Well, I didn't make that list. I mean, give me a break.
She was on the board, that presented me with the list.
When you want to justify your actions, you always try to associate yourself with me because you're wrong.
And I was talking, and when you talked, I didn't interrupt or say a word.
Well, then stop lying to people.
No, 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 I'm not, this is, this is accurate information.
All you do is lie.
It's interesting that when we get a suggestion and then we act on it, um, it's a lie.
I see you smiling because you're lying, and you know you're lying, and that is a perfect telling.
And, and again, I'll be clear, people that watch the meetings, when Commissioner Zubek speaks, I do not speak, I do not interrupt. I have a level of decorum.
Cause I'm not lying.
No matter what the difference of opinion is.
Cause you have no response because I'm not lying.
Okay, anyway, I appreciate the work you put in.
I didn't do that.
To get us to this position, to make this hire tonight.
Apparently, a staff was rogue in making that list because I had nothing to do with it, there was never any discussion on that Fire Services Committee about it.
I'm not.
And for you to sit here and say, oh, when I got on in 2024, there was a list.
Yes.
Well, how, maybe it was your list. Maybe, maybe you jotted it down when you're in the audience.
Let me have the discussion. It came from the citizens who were appointed to the board by Commissioner Zubek, two of them still serve. And one of them met with me personally, and, um, so, a- again, it's a case of, it's a good idea.
No, it's not.
I'll give the person credit, they came up with it, but now that we're in a position to enact it, now someone doesn't like it.
Well, you, you insinuated to the public that I came up with the list, you said I was chair, I came up with the list.
Your committee, your board.
Now you're saying it was the citizens. Everybody knows you're lying.
The citizens met with me because they carried over into this.
Everybody knows if you, you can't tell the truth if you open your mouth.
So, o- over and over again, we're, we're interrupting with, with a lie of something that's on the agenda, that has gone through the process, that had to originate.
What was the process for the hiring, anyway? How many applicants were there?
Thirty-seven, and you had, you had.
Thirty-seven?
You were part of the process.
I wasn't part of that process.
And to be clear, we, we voted on this, I'm not saying she voted for it, but we had this discussion in public.
I wasn't part of that hiring process.
This isn't a surprise that, that we're at this point.
So how many applicants?
But again, when, when we try to lead and make decisions to improve the township, this is what we face.
Well, I've been hearing since the day.
Thank you, I'm, I'm done talking.
I heard since the day that vote was taken, that you guys already had your hand-picked candidate. So I would like to know, just for the public's transparency, you know, so everybody knows how many candidates, what was the length of the process, how did you whittle it down, and, you know, how did you arrive at your decision? It's okay, and I have nothing against the decision, I have nothing against that, but I do have a problem with the lying to the public and insinuating that I had anything to do with some list that this was thrown onto. I'd love to know what else was on that list that was my idea. And secondly, I would like to know what, why you sit up here and every time you want to justify something, you, you hold a piece of paper up and all of a sudden you, you say it's your prop, and it has to be the truth because here's a piece of paper. It could be a blank piece of paper, he doesn't really care.
It's the agenda, you guys have to.
He always has a prop. On Facebook, it could be your, your grocery list, but you still throw it on Facebook to say so-and-so said this, and it says chocolate milk. Honestly, can you please just tell the truth once in a while? Stop embellishing, stop lying, and stop taking 40 minutes to tell somebody something you could tell them in two minutes.
Commissioner Taki, go ahead.
Yeah, um, look, I have a new issue with Mr. Connelly. Think he's a great guy, think he's served the township well over the years. I do have an issue with the amount of money being spent through this board for the past almost two years now, which I know it's making us definitely having, we're gonna have issues in the near future, I know we are financially. Regardless of what anyone says up here, it's gonna happen, unfortunately. There's a lot of money being spent, we have less fire company, companies in this township, unfortunately, than what we did two years ago, three years ago. There's, I'm totally supportive of our fire service, I know Commissioner Zubek is to.
Absolutely.
We are not handling business completely right in this township. We are not being sensible with how we're spending on the funds that we do have, and we have to be more conservative with what's happening and how the funds are being spent. And, uh, Mr. Connolly, everything Commissioner Zubek stated was 100% accurate. You're constantly on Facebook bashing us, continuing to put lies out there to the public, and I'm really getting tired of it. We are 100% doing everything the right way, we have been. And, uh, I'm really just getting extremely tired of the lies and the deceit that you have been doing. And I, uh, I already know how this is gonna go anyway, but I would suggest if you, if everyone's okay with it, let's take the vote.
Just, I just want to clarify a couple things here. Um, one, this is not out of the general fund, this is out of the fire fund, which is a separate. It does, it does not.
It's all taxpayer money.
Yes. It, it, you're, you're 100% right, but, I mean, the narrative has to be painted properly. Um, a lot of the con- conversations that have been had was about the depressed state of the general fund, and this is a totally separate fund than our general fund, this is actually, uh, paid for out of the fire tax. Um, so let's just get that straight first. Um, secondly, the fire service in Swatara Township, and I talk about it a lot, has drastically changed for the better, and y- you don't just have a all-volunteer system, you have a part-time system as well. You have a HR component, you have a business sense to, uh, the workings of the fire department. The days of each independent fire department operating independently is no longer there. Um, we operate on one standard operating guideline, one, one set of rules, regulation headed by a department chief. And this has been going on, now we've had part-timers for two years now. Um, so at, at some point, as.
Three.
Three.
Yeah, it's been longer than two years.
As your business begins to grow, it only makes sense that you have some administrative component to your business. You can't run the business with just one person, that's unrealistic, and, and we have to stop being unrealistic and short-staffing things. There's, I mean, I think it's no secret that Swatara Township deserves a guaranteed response, and I'm going to keep beating this drum. Um, a- and part of that guaranteed response was first, uh, you know, the Band-Aid was the volunteers and, and the incentive program, and we helped out with that, and then, uh, we came with the part-time firemen, which was still in line in the budget without a tax increase, and this position here is a stepping stone as well because this person, and trust me, me and Joe have had our differences through the last 12, 13 years, but the guy is highly qualified for this position. And, uh, Joe will be a valuable asset as, as he has always been to the fire service. And it's not like this person coming on board is only administrative, this person can drive a fire truck, this person is technically an interior firefighter, so, you know, when we need someone to drive during the day or whatever hours this person's going to be, that person's going to be there, he's gonna help out with the inspection program. And then most importantly, I think it's something that every single one of us, including the public, including every member on this board, and including the Fire Service Board, has been asking for, someone to be able to help out with recruitment intention full-time. And that's what a volunteer coordinator is. Um, I, I agree with Joe being chosen for this position. Now I'm gonna move on to, uh, as far as the authorization to authorize the police receptionist position, that's on there because.
I, I would actually like to comment on the prior item, if you're gonna move on to the next item, can I just make one quick comment?
You can do next, they're gonna let him finish.
Well, I didn't know he was gonna comment on the next item.
It doesn't matter, you got, you got your time, you can say whatever, one is your turn again.
So, uh, kudos to you Superintendent Safer because you did hold off as long as you possibly could, I know we were trying to work this into the '26, uh, budget, but we're gonna fall short because obviously your manpower is going to go back on the street. So this position is essentially for us to, this board, to agree to advertise that receptionist position because there was, the current receptionist, excuse me, the old receptionist got promoted to secretary, and I just wanted to touch basis on that. So when you seen that, we're ahead of the '26 budget. Um, our cops that were on light duty are now going back to the street, so we're gonna have to, uh, look at hiring this position ahead of the '26 budget, and that's all I have.
So, yeah, I would like, um, so I just want to touch on the staffing thing for a minute. We had commissioners, a commissioner on this board who had concerns about us hiring necessary staff in our Public Works Department. And at the time, we only had six staff people in that department. It takes nine just to do leaf collection, I think maybe like between nine and 11 to do brush collection. Um, and it takes a, a lot of people to do plowing and making sure that our roads are passable in the wintertime. Um, so to me, that's necessary. Um, any additional support staff, assistant here and there, that's a want. For a person that's been doing the job since before I got on the board, and now there's less stations, and that, that's a want, that's not a need. And fire fund money is taxpayer money, and I'm gonna give the residents a perfect example. In 2023, when I got on as president, I was looking through the budget, there was a lot of budget issues at that time, major mismanagement of our finances and budget issues. And one of the items on there was $150,000 for hydrant services that instead of coming out of the fire fund, was coming out of our general fund. So for the residents' information, the money that's in the fire fund, you have to pay, spend on fire-related activities. But if you want to spend any other money on fire-related activities, you can also take it out of the general fund, there's no restriction there. And I am sick and tired of watching people in this board kick the can down the road, blame the next board, blame other people for their own mismanagement, and consistently rob Peter to pay Paul. And Commissioner Connolly, you are the poster child for that. You do it over and over and over again. We started out 2023, instead of putting $90,000, $99,000 into ambulance service, you underfunded it and only spent $60,000. You have no respect for the finances of this township, for the residents, the taxpayers, and the process. And in 2020, we went from $15 million in revenue to $13 million in revenue. You lost us $2 million in one year. So don't sit here and tell me that I'm doing something wrong, don't bash me on Facebook and put lies out there to, to divert from you. You should take a look in the mirror.
I, I just want to respond, it, it's a great story, but the, I left the board in '21.
Off factual, thank you, off factual.
So the President of the Board in '22.
At the end of 2022, you're, you're a liar, 2022.
Look that up, everyone look that up.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I dealt with the 20.
Oh, no, 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 look that up.
I dealt with the 2022 budget that you gave us.
So it was so mad in 2022.
He gave us the budget.
In 2023, she had problems, but she was the President of the Board in 2022.
She's like a master manipulator.
I'm not gonna dispute that, that there were problems with the budget that year, but I will say this.
$2 million, Commissioner Connolly.
From the time I was elected, taxes have not increased in this township, and that seems to bother some people.
$2 million you lost in one year.
I worked for the residents, and, and how would a, a single commissioner on the board lose $2 million? So you might as well make it $2 billion.
Okay, I'll tell you.
You're gonna, you're gonna tell a story.
You went out and borrowed $20 million, you cut revenue that year by $180,000, you multiply that by the next three years, and you have your $2 million deficit. And what you were, you weren't counting on, which you, you know, God helped you, and COVID happened, and you got ARPA fund money for the next two years so you can mask your mismanagement. And you know what? The people that I've spoken to in the public, they see right through you, they know what you do, and you're a master manipulator, and it's gonna catch up to you.
Are we ready to vote yet?
And that's why you don't want a financial audit.
Yeah. There's a lot of things that are inaccurate with that, but Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Taki?
No to C, yes to A, B, and D.
Commissioner Zubek?
No to C.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Yes.
President Ellis?
Yes.
All right, we're up to item 11, consideration of minutes. These are minutes that I overlooked, um, so we're getting them approved so we can get them on the website now.
Motion, motion, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to 12, building and codes plans, uh, I'll turn it over to Director Golden.
Sure, so Madam President, do you mind if I make just a brief statement about a public comment tonight?
Sure.
It'll be very brief. Um, so, over the past few weeks, we have heard from the business owners, um, of two businesses within the township, also Triple Crown, also tonight, they were here. I just want to make four very brief points, it's not gonna affect the zoning hearing board outcome whatsoever, I just want to put some facts out there. So, uh, this land development plan was approved April 12th, 2023. The recorded land development plan that I have right in front of me with all the signatures and stamps of the county states that the zoning use, which that board at that time approved, was office as a principal use and accessory storage, which is a warehouse, could be considered a warehouse. So your principal use, office, which was and still is permitted within the general commercial zoning district, and accessory storage, accessory warehouse, is and was permitted as an accessory use within the commercial general zoning district. So, uh, I wanna, my second point, they stated tonight that I'm refusing to release the certificate of occupancy. So let me give a little bit of background there. They applied for a building and zoning permit many years ago for the shell of the structure only. They deferred their fire suppression permit. Uh, a CO has never been issued by Approved Code Services, never has been issued for, by Approved Code Services, so I cannot withhold a document that doesn't exist. They just applied for their fire suppression, uh, per, building permit within the past month. It was dropped off here for, by Approved Code Services within the past two weeks, it is sitting in my drawer over there for pickup, they have not picked up the fire suppression permit. So there's no way, and heck, that I'm withholding a CO because it doesn't exist. My third point is we are holding a bond currently for $50,061 for that structure. There's, uh, vast issues with one of their BMP basins, they don't have the vast majority of their landscaping completed, so to even apply for a permit is premature. It's just, it's just not done. I know they come in and say that, you know, we want to get these people in yesterday, but when these, when the, when we still are holding a bond, there's still stormwater issues, you know, we can't do that, we can't, we can't release anything. And I just want to say, the businesses that came in here last week, I, I have nothing against them, I want them to be successful, I want them to stay successful, I want them to stay in Swatara Township, but I'm only authorized by law to what this board does and per, permit, permits in the zoning ordinance. This district, like I said, is in the commercial general zoning district, warehousing and distribution as a principal use are not permitted, it's never been permitted, it's not permitted. So, uh, the businesses that came in, they're currently. So, uh, the businesses that came in, they're currently located in the limited manufacturing zoning district where distribution and warehousing is permitted. It's permitted by right. So I just wanted to put those facts out there. I know people are thinking I'm a terrible person by denying a zoning permit, but I'm doing what the township has in their zoning ordinance. I will always do that, um, regardless of some feel it's wrong. We'll move on to the first item because I know Mr. McNaughton and Mr. Navarro probably wanna get out of here. So the first item, A, this is the consideration of advertisement for a public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment application for parcel six-three-zero-six-two-zero-five-eight, which has no address. And this is Mr. McNaughton's. Uh, we are recommending, staff's recommending a public hearing for November twelfth. And the same thing with the next, um, for Mr. Navarro's properties. The planning, township's planning commission did review and did recommend approval of both applications. Um, the county's planning commission reviewed and provided comments. They don't recommend approval or denial of any plans. They just, uh, state recommendations, which is in your packets. Uh, we are recommending that we hold the public hearing for November twelfth. And we'll advertise it properly if the, the board so desires to hold a public hearing.
All right. Do we have any discussion at this time on items twelve, A and B?
Motion to approve both. Seconds.
Anybody have anything? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Up to twelve, C.
Okay, thank you. So last night, we had a very good discussion. Um, we were lucky enough not to have any particular, uh, land development or subdivision plans, which is pretty, uh, rare for us. So what we wanted to do, we wanted to take the opportunity to kind of review, uh, two, we believe, hot topics within the township. Um, the first being buffer yards, planting screens, and then data centers. So I won't take a whole lot of your time, but I wanna kind of give a, a background of what we talked about just in case those at home weren't able to view the meeting on, uh, Facebook. So first, we talked about buffer yards, planting screenings. So what we did was, we took, uh, three businesses. Uh, we did some drone aerials, and I can just give an example of the kind of pictures we were looking at. Uh, Jack?
What am I up to?
Please, I'm sorry, sorry.
Sorry, okay.
No, it's good. So we looked at three different businesses. The one was ten-sixty-five High Spire Road, Eisenhower Business Center. Um, they are not a hundred percent complete, as I just stated in my previous discussion. Um, but we wanted to kind of look at various buffers, um, what the zoning ordinance requires, what the SADO requires. And we wanted to see what the planning commission's thoughts were, uh, to see if there was any updates they believe it needed to be added or changed to our SADO and our zoning. So this was, uh, ten-sixty-five High Spire Road. They also looked at, let's see. We also looked at GW Signs, which is on Chambers Hill Road. And then we looked at the Wawa. We obviously know that Wawa has not been built yet, and they're currently in the building phase. So we looked over these three plans, and the, the consensus of the planning commission, it was unanimous consensus, was that our buffering is appropriate, our buffer, buffering ordinance is appropriate. However, we, they did determine that there was, um, missing pieces. So we have a strict, very strong buffer ordinance, however, it was missed in the past, for example, street trees. Um, some projects missed putting in sidewalks altogether. We, the township never received fee in lieu of money. The township never deferred it. It was just missed for whatever reason. So, uh, the planning commission asked me to, to create some kind of a template for them to help them also review the plans to make sure those little errors don't happen in the future. Um, let's see. So that was pretty much the, the extent of the buffer yard and planning screen. So you're not gonna see, in our next text amendment, re- recommendation from the planning commission, you're not gonna see any recommended buffer, buffering changes because they, they feel it was appropriate. Um, next, data centers, another hot topic. Um, we did receive public comment and one public comment document. And also Commissioner Zubek also submitted some comments. So, uh, we did wanna review those. They were the only public comments we received to date. So we definitely wanted to make sure that both of their voices were heard. We, we talked about various, you know, the location of it. So the, the planning commission unanimously agreed that the mixed-use district is the most appropriate district for the data center use. Um, I know Commissioner Zubek.
Yeah, I wanna correct that statement.
I didn't even stop.
I'm gonna correct that statement.
Can I see?
I would like to correct the statement. He, we're talking about data centers, right?
Yeah, I'm not done.
So it was stated last night that I'm for, um, one hundred percent for data centers in industrial areas, that I wanted to add additional areas in the township for data centers. I mean, there was a lot of misinformation words put in my mouth last evening that I would like to correct. So.
Can I finish what I'm saying?
Well, but you and Commissioner Connolly put out this misinformation in the planning commission. So you can finish what you're saying, but I, I do reserve the right to correct the record.
Sure. So I knew you were gonna bring that up tonight.
Oh, you knew I was gonna bring it up, but you lied?
No, no, I knew you were gonna bring it up. So I wanted to actually bring your email up and put it on the screen. Um, that you state here that.
Read the whole thing for me, please.
I'll, I'll read what I wanna read.
So it's full context.
Rather than just changing the zoning, we could have specified.
Could have.
Data centers are conditional uses, only permitted in commercial or industrial zones, like some of our neighbors.
So basically, I said we could have. No, go back to could have.
Can I please finish?
For you to sit there and say, I said that we should do this. Could have is the key phrase there.
Can I please finish?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, with all due respect.
Thank you, please don't interrupt me.
Excuse you? Excuse me? Listen, I won't interrupt anytime. I, I, sir, I ask questions sometimes, and I'm asking. But for you to sit there and say, don't interrupt me.
Please do not interrupt me.
Do not disrespect me.
You're disrespecting me.
Right. And you shouldn't put, staff should not put lies out to the public about Commissioner.
So that's why I wanted to bring the email up. So, "We're only permitted in commercial or industrial zones." So why I brought that up was not to bash Commissioner Zubek, but it was to let the planning commission review that. So that's the planning commission's job, is to take concerns and complaints of anybody. And so we reviewed that.
Well, I'm gonna bring copies of the, of the planning commission meeting to the next meeting, then.
I'm showing you your own email.
No, I'm, I'm gonna show you what you stated.
I read it word for word. Um, but anyway, "Commercial or industrial zones." So the planning commission reviewed that, and they determined that it's not appropriate in Solterra Township to put the data center use either permitted by right, conditional use, or special exceptions in any commercial or industrial zones. I wanted to bring that to your attention because the planning commission makes recommendations to this body. And they do not support that recommendation.
So my, my recommendations in that document, just so you know, were, after I voted against the zoning change, I'm not okay with you, just this board, the, the majority on the board's decision to just say, oh, we're gonna get rid of the rest of the agricultural area in our township and just say that we can have data centers there. Or, you know, I know someone said that you could put one in their backyard. Well, we all know that you can't put one in someone's backyard because most people's backyards are not the size of what a data center requires. So to sit there and insinuate, so I provided suggestions to this board after you decided you wanted data centers in our township. And the suggestions were basically stating, you could have considered other options. And I told you before the board took that vote, that I had concerns about it, and that you could have considered other options. And the recommendations I took were based off of other states that did the same thing. So you may think that you know everything there is to know about data centers and zoning, and, you know, your word is the word, but there are many other experts out there that provide other options that could be utilized. And for our board, any board, our board, the planning commission, anybody to think that they have all the answers and they shouldn't consider recommendations, and that's what they were. They were suggestions and recommendations. You don't have to agree with it. You don't have to like it. But to sit there and say, Commissioner Zubek said that we should put data centers here, and she wants to add additional data centers in our township, in these areas of the township, completely false lies. And I am tired of the, you know, trying to fabricate the truth and, you know, put, put ideas here that, oh, she may have said this, or. If you read the context, you'll know that I said, the board could have considered these things. But no, you know what? The board couldn't consider it. You know why? Because you and Commissioner Connolly made your decision, and then we had a week to review, and I had to ask a bunch of questions, and I hardly had any time. And then you decided to push through an amendment to our zoning ordinances because somebody at the county wanted Tom Connolly to do him a favor so they could get forty-seven million dollars.
What meeting are you talking about? What, what, what meeting are you talking about?
I'm talking about the zoning changes.
No, no, I'm talking to Zach.
I'm talking about the planning commission meeting last night.
What meeting are you talking about with this being, and Commissioner Zubek talking about?
I read that entire statement.
September third, first meeting in September.
That's right.
And then she provided the information to Zach sometime since then.
Which I said I would provide.
Right, so she said, she said she would provide her recommendations for consideration, and the planning commission basically wasn't, uh, interested in, in doing that.
No, you weren't interested.
But we're on the planning commission.
They never said they weren't interested. They said, thank you for providing the document. Actually, no. I showed up last night, and they never even had the document.
You mind if I ask some questions?
I, I had to email it to them.
Where did this conversation come from in this email? I don't have this email.
I read it in September, and you were here. Maybe you ignored me, blocked me out or something. I don't know.
No, no, I was trying to figure out where all this started.
I showed up last night at the planning commission meeting. I emailed it to him so it could be presented. And I showed up, and I made some comments, and they didn't even have the document. So for someone to sit here and say, oh, they weren't interested, I'm gonna, I, I mean, I would like to know if they at least accept suggestions from people. Do you say that, did they tell you that they weren't interested?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, they did. So they, they said. So a lot of, a lot of the suggestions were put in that resident's email as well. Did they say they're not interested in what the residents have to say?
Chad Martin said that he believes that the mixed-use area was the most appropriate.
So I'm not even talking about the area. I'm talking about the noise pollution, the trap. You guys wanna fixate on one little tiny sentence in a long document where I said about.
I'm trying to figure out where it came.
Addressing, I read it last, I read it in September, but.
Okay.
What about the noise order? What about the noise? What about the buffers? What about the, the pollution that I, that I talked about? What about the electricity usage? What about the water usage? Are you saying, are you saying that our planning commission has no interest whatsoever in any of the suggestions in my document?
They addressed all those things last night, and anybody can watch the meeting.
Water usage or?
Can I ask a question?
Well, you said they weren't interested in anything I had to say.
Can we calm down so we can get some questions out here? I mean, I think Commissioner Zubek has a right to make recommendations.
Absolutely.
And I, I think she's in her right. I don't, I didn't get this email, and I just, we just told, okay, I got, we got it today. I wasn't at the planning commission yesterday. So I'd be interested to know, what are her recommendations? And, and, because I don't know the map that well for the commercial industrial zones.
I, I believe Commissioner Ellis shared that earlier today, yeah.
Okay, I didn't get to my emails today yet, so that's my fault.
Yeah, so the purpose of the meeting last night was to go through residents, and she's a resident as well, Commissioner.
I was there as a resident.
Yep.
But where does that line up with our map?
And I didn't, no, we just automatically dismiss suggestions from people.
And, and industrial zones.
Is that an automatic? We just see, we just dismiss them?
I think, I think if she's given recommendations, that they should be taken into consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
This is what we did last night. We pulled up the zoning map, um, and we looked at commercial and industrial properties. And commercial and industrial kind of highlight all of these. General commercial, limited commercial, highway commercial, limited manufacturing, and general manufacturing. So the last two, limited manufacturing and general manu- manufacturing are our industrial districts. So if you look at these, anywhere in red, red, either checkered, uh, purple, or a pinkish color are these districts. So the planning commission looked at this, and they said it was too, uh, it was too close to residential properties. So they felt, which they said in the public meeting, it's on Facebook, it's a recording, they felt that the mixed-use properties are the most appropriate location for proposed data centers, not commercial or industrial.
That's where we made the protections and the changes.
Correct.
Well, there's no protections. That's what I was arguing. Commissioner, um, Steele, I appreciate your interest in my recommendations. My recommendations, I know that the zoning change is done. I didn't ask for anything further, as was insinuated. I said this is, these are things that the board could have considered, but I, by no means, if you read my, did I ever say I would like the planning commission to revisit this. Never said that. But secondly, I provided recommendations in my document on traffic, studies, um, noise studies, you know, environmental studies that I think are necessary for the benefit and the protection of our residents. So when you say protections, all I care about is protections. I didn't, I, I'm not gonna sit up here and play politics with Commissioner Connolly twenty-four seven, because frankly, it's exhausting. I really just want to have the residents in the township taken into consideration. And some of those mixed-use districts, in my opinion, are also close to residential. So in, in my document, I stated that we should take residential into consideration. So if for some, you know, a project comes in and it is in the mixed-use district, if it's close to residential, we should consider that. That's all I said in my document. I'm glad I was able to add some context tonight. If you would have called me on the phone and we could have had a discussion, I could have explained it to you before you misrepresented my position to all of the residents in the township and the planning commission. I take serious offense to words being put in my mouth, mouth, and my words being twisted. And I'm always happy to add context.
Yeah, I just wanna say, when we settled on the MU, the two small gray areas on the map, it was with input from the planning commission, it was with multiple meetings here, and it was with the legal review. So there was a process of, uh, months, maybe eight months, maybe nine months to get there. So nobody had one week.
There was no discussion with commissioners, none whatsoever.
We picked the MU, which is in the least populated area of the township, that has transmission lines and was the best place for the data centers, based on the experts. Um.
Are you an expert?
Commissioner Zubek, Kentucky, voted against that. And then she came back last, in September third, and said, maybe we should pick some other area.
No, I said we should have considered.
We should have considered. She recommended we should have considered the other area.
And then I provided suggestions.
The entire map was in play at the beginning of this, and we selected a fraction of it. So to come back and add the, the five colors above the MU.
I didn't wanna add those, and that, nor does that document state that, Commissioner Connolly. And that's where you, I'm not sure if you can read or comprehend things properly, but I never said that in my document. I said, we could have considered this. And then I went on to make suggestions as to what we can do to protect our residents. And I think you, of all people, that claim to be for the people, and you do all this stuff in the community, should have an interest in looking at how much electricity is gonna be used, how much water is gonna be used, what options there are for mitigating ex, extreme usages. And I have news for you. PPL getting ready to do a massive increase. Some of these other, you know, water company, there are some increases going up. People are tired of seeing increases, and then you wanna come and you wanna do things that you know are gonna have a negative impact in our community, instead of doing your homework. And that's all I was asking, because I did an extensive amount of research on that, and I think I deserve at least a little bit of consideration and to be able to work with members on this board. And not in eighteen months, and all you've done is shunned people, threatened people, bullied people, turned your back on people. You, you have no consideration for anyone but yourself.
Commissioner Zubek, that's what we, that's what we did. We took your document and we went down through it. Also with, uh, Zoe Loftus's comments. So we talked about, I know you had to leave, but we talked about sewer, and that's regulated by DADEP.
But I also saw the part where you insinuated that I wanted to expand on the data centers when I didn't even vote for the zoning change.
I actually read word for word.
And that is extreme. No, you didn't. I think it took some pulling teeth for you to actually read the full context, and I watched the video. So to sit there and say I wasn't there, I think people waited until I left to put words in my mouth and misrepresent my position on that issue.
Anyway, we looked. Anyway, we looked at sewer issues, so that's a hundred percent regulated by P A D E P. We looked at water, that's a hundred percent regulated by P A D E P. We looked at traffic studies.
You are completely incorrect.
That's going to be a hundred percent regulated by Penn dump.
Yes, things might be regulated, but we have the ability at the township level, the local municipal lever, level to set parameters on what is located in our township. We have the ability to do that. You might have some regulations, but we have the ability to go farther than that. And my recommendation is that we consider.
That statement is in direct contradiction to what the solicitor said last night.
That's not, no, absolutely.
We can't set the, we can't set the logic.
We have the, I have, I have done.
And we can't set things higher than whatever regulation is already.
I actually don't think that there's a desire to do anything. I think you just want to rubber stamp it.
Because we would be sued and we would lose if we tried to do something higher than what the state or whatever.
That's not true. And a commissioner on this.
Call the solicitor from the planning commission. That was what he said.
Comply with the law and you can actually go a little bit more strict on certain things. Well, then maybe he was wrong too. But here's, here's the thing.
Now you're an expert on being an attorney as well.
You know what, you know what, Commissioner.
That's the solicitor last night said that.
Commissioner, you and your father, you have these backroom deals. You want to decide, you want to get, take a business, you want to, you want to pick and choose. So you're going to say no to Arsen Tower and yes to the one on three twenty-two.
Choose to say.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's really, it's, the irony is, is astounding.
Coming from someone who called me trash. It's all good.
Yes, I did. You're right. Absolutely.
Excuse me, please.
Go ahead. That speaks to your character.
Got it. Go ahead.
There was some things misrepresented that last night to miss, planning commission's meeting. But, uh, I would hope that we could move on at this point right now with this meeting because.
That'd be great.
Um, but yeah, I'll finish up quickly. So we did look at all the concerns, um, from the two residences. And, uh, the board decided that we should look at Cumberland County and then Lehigh Valley ordinances, um, to see what kind of recommendations, you know, they have and what's working for them. So we will probably review more data center information at the planning commission next month, so stand by.
Well, a lot of those suggestions came from neighboring municipalities, so good.
All right, we're up to thirteen reports. Um, Treasurer Yozenski.
Yes, this is for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The total of all funds had a beginning balance of twenty-five million ninety thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. We received four million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. We dispersed six million four hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-two cents with an ending balance at the end of September of twenty-three million five hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Are we going to have any dis, oh, yeah.
Second.
I do have a question on the treasurer's report. So, um, in the general fund, can you tell me what is the total payroll for our township staff?
Um, it varies, but it averages around three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. And so, um, under general payroll right now, the ending balance is seventy-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-four cents?
Yes.
So what are we going to do to make payroll?
That's, you're, you're misreading.
Do we have any money come in?
You're, you're misreading that.
So where, where's the payroll coming from?
You're mis, you're misreading that. The, the, the problem is that's, that's a cash basis. So that seventy-four thousand can be sitting there for.
So payroll doesn't come out of the general fund?
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. So that seventy-four thousand that you see sitting there as the ending balance, that could be paying third party. So like Aflac, um, eh, eh, child support, that's why you see that ending balance there. You'll, you'll see a transfer, you'll see a transfer.
So what comes, what is?
Let me finish real quick.
What do we have in the general fund for payroll? How much?
It, it doesn't, I, I'm going to answer your question about the payroll account first unless Brittany wants to explain it to. But, but the seventy-four thousand that you see sitting there could be what's left over to pay child support benefits, things that are deducted from the employees' payroll.
Okay, so where does the payroll lie?
Let me finish. I know where you're going with that. So for you, for, for you thinking that the seventy-four thousand that we can't make payroll?
No, I'm not asking that.
That payroll's already been made.
I'm asking what the, I just want to go through and ask what the totals are, okay? So where does the payroll come out of?
Okay, so it does come out of payroll fund, however, the money is funded from general, fire and old.
Okay, so how much do we have for payroll?
Well, it is about three hundred thousand and there is only at, at the end of this treasurer's report, a hundred thousand. In the general fund, there's the fire, there's also the fire fund, the old's fund. And then what is in the general, in the payroll fund?
So that's not a lot of money.
It's low.
That's not, that's very low.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to know maybe next month or as we're continuing with budget discussions, what we're going to do between now and the end of the year.
Can, can you explain the process of receipts and then adding that transfer? So.
Where's the transfer coming from?
So, so you get a BP, so a BP, we're, we're going to get L S T, uh, E I T this month or within the next month and a half.
We've already got it.
Okay, so you'll get that, that'll be dispersed. That's not going to be showing on September because this is a, a cash balance report. So those, those deposits will come in, whatever she does for BP will come in and then that'll be transferred to payroll.
So you'll see.
To make payroll.
A better example is if you look at the general fund above the payroll fund, just this, just in September alone.
You had three months of receipts.
That money came in, that money went out to cover payroll.
So what is the, um, expected revenue for BP?
Um, the third quarter is wrapping up at the end of Oc, or I'm sorry, the fourth quarter. Yeah, third quarter is wrapping up at the end of October, so the, some bigger funds will come in by the end of the month.
Do you know how much money it is?
No, it's way over a hundred.
I just like an estimate, just a real quick estimate.
I, I can give you it on, on Friday, how much you've collected, how, how much.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. I'm just trying to figure out. And, and how much do we owe, like, do we still have money that we owe in that tran loan?
Yes, we do.
How much do we owe in the tran loan?
One point three million.
So we owe one point three million in the tran loan. And then I would like BP for Friday.
Yes.
And we're pretty low in the general fund, so that's concerning to me. I mean, anybody can do the math. That's very concerning. But thank you so much for answering my questions.
And, and to be clear, the, the general fund at the end of the month is higher than it was at the beginning of the month. So, so it was seventy-four thousand.
Yes, that doesn't make me feel better.
So it's a hundred and seven thousand, but if, if you look at the receipts that came in, um, it was three million and seventy-two thousand, so.
But that doesn't make me feel better that it was seventy-four and now it's a, over a hundred.
So one million for business privilege, you still got about seven hundred thousand to collect and.
But I'm, I'm really concerned that the one point three million for the tran loan is due by the end of the year.
Uh, I do want to let you know, uh, for the payroll, that is this Friday. We did make it with the E I T and L S T taxes that come in. There's still some remaining, so.
Yeah, and, and just one other thing, um, we have a couple of large payments that, that will come in before the end of the year. Um, the P P N L money that we talked about. Uh, and then, um, neighboring school district.
So that's four hundred thousand and our payroll is three hundred thousand, so that barely, I mean, that.
Right.
Covers a month.
Right, so if that's your concern, if you, if you add the business privilege, um, E I T, those two payments. Um, the good thing is the months that are left would be October, November and December. So, um, the amount would more, more than cover that.
I think it's sad that you're counting on money we don't even have yet.
Well, that, that's how it, it comes in here. The taxes are paid on a certain day, the, the.
One point three million dollars in the tran loan by the end of the year. A hundred thousand dollars in our general fund and, you know, and then I, I, I really don't know how you're counting. I don't know where you're getting your numbers.
Off, off the report that's in front of us.
That's right, and that's where I'm getting mine too, and that's where I am concerned. And, and then you want to go and you want to spend fifty-two thousand dollars on someone and you want to, you have all these big plans and you owe one point three million by the end of the year.
I think it's not apples to apples that, it, it's not fair. If you're going to talk about separate funds so the public understands what you're talking about, I think it's fair to assess what the fund that you're talking about is.
I know what I'm talking about.
Because like the, the, again, we're back to that same position and I understand your concern with the fifty thousand dollars, but that is a total separate fund. That is not in a depressed state. I think there, there has been no secret that the general fund has been in a depressed state, stay in, stay in line with the budget. You can make it happen.
I'm concerned with all of it, Commissioner.
We did about seventeen million last year, uh, in revenue. And we did about seventeen million in expenses. We were only off about fifty thousand dollars, so that was a good recovery year over year.
I'm, I'm concerned.
And, and that was, let me finish, please. And, and I'm, I'm fine. I'm just, I just want to get some of this, some of these thoughts because I've been talking to the finance director because I've been concerned, had some of the same concerns since I got on this board. And I've, I've, I've voiced this to the public time and time again. Um, I think I've, I've, I've made, uh, considerable headway with staff to, to, to get the finances in line where we could. But just so we understand, we have been in a depressed state in the general fund for years. This is not something that just happened overnight and I, and I continue to say that to the public and I continue to say that to the board.
Actually, that's not true. I love this part.
That is true, that is true.
I think it happens as soon as Commissioner Connolly took over as president.
Like, I will let you talk, just, you just let me just explain and, and, and I, I'll do that. I, I have no problem with that.
It's fine. You go right ahead. I ask my questions anyway. I'm done.
I mean, l- last year was a, a, a tight year where we held expenses very, very tightly in, in, in check and, and we, we did it. And we did it the same way last year with the tran. Now, um, we're going to do it again this year. But to, it's not fair to assess that this has happened in a year and I, and I continue to say this. This isn't, this is something that's been systemic for fifteen, twenty years. Your experts that came in here and our financial advisors will tell you the same thing. And at some point, you got to make decisions. Over the last fifteen, twenty and even thirty years, you had increases, for example, for simplicity, just in, in contracts alone. We have collective bargaining employees here. So if, if your budget increases due to a collective bargaining by, let's just say, a five percent increase, if you don't get five percent increased revenue, you have to meet that at your expense level. Well, if you don't get additional five percent in, in revenue, you're lopsided on your expenses. Now, what you're looking at is you could take out a capital reserves or you could borrow against the tran. And because of the state that the capital reserves was in, we, we couldn't borrow out of capital reserves, so we did a tran, attaching anticipated notes. I mean, I think there's all.
I don't, I don't, I don't dispute a lot of what you're saying, Mr. Steele. What I am concerned about is I'm doing the math. And I'm looking at where we were last year and, you know, and I think there was, I actually agree with you. There was more of a conscious decision on some of the cost savings. And then I watched people purchase cars without any board approval and drones and all kinds of things without board approval. And I've watched the money dissipate. And now we, here we are in Septem, October, October, and we have two months left in the year. We have one point three million dollars on a tran loan and we're paying additional money just to owe that money. And, and our, our payroll is three hundred thousand dollars. And the response that I get from your co-finance chair on the board is, well, we have four hundred thousand dollars in P P L coming. Okay, that'll cover a month, but here's my thing. Why are, if we hadn't had that deal from P P L, we haven't had that money, why is, why are commissioners on this board always looking to spend money before we even get it? That's my concern and it's a, it's a vicious cycle that we've had, like you said. You say it was many years. I don't think it's many years. I think it is a pattern from certain commissioners on this board.
No, it, it has been and that's, that's where I, I think it's, it's important that the public in this board, the members, understand how it operates. There has like, you know, one of your things was the ambulance fund. The levy in the ambulance fund even years ago or even in debt services fund was off. But you know, what you do is you, you take money from other funds to sustain it and then you pay it back.
Should not have done that. That should not have happened.
That's been happening since you were president.
He's cutting funds short. He was cutting funds short.
Let me, let me finish.
And we had a deficit and we didn't even know it in twenty twenty-two.
There is no difference.
A budget that he said was going to be sustainable and not even know what you have because he cut funds short, that's wrong.
So, so let me give you an example and, and, and I'm not pointing any fingers, but you got to understand that.
I've already done it.
Even in twenty-two and twenty-three, you came short in liquid fuels and you borrowed from other funds until the deposit came in. That happens. That is, that is the way the government.
No, you don't borrow from liquid fuels. It's restricted money and I'm done. I'm done with this policy.
You totally missed what I just said. In order to pay the obligations to liquid fuels, you borrow from other funds until the state deposits your money. And my line, Brittany. It happens every year.
You really should just budget and not spend money you don't have.
Here's the thing, if, if you have, you, you got to understand, if you have a one point five million dollar budget in twenty-six for liquid fuels, but the state only gives you nine hundred thousand dollars, you have a shortfall. Where do you make up from that shortfall if you don't have the reserves? You borrow from the other fund until the state deposits your money. That is legally allowed and that's what they've played.
I'm done with excuses. All I know is the numbers don't lie.
You just have to understand how it works and I'm, I'm okay with Brittany explaining how this works because, listen, I'm not going to lie. Twenty months ago, I had no damn clue how the government worked when it, when it related to budgets. And it's, it's, it's amazing and it's eye-opening when you get to understand it and Jim and Brittany have taught me a lot.
I understand it very well, Commissioner.
I don't think so.
I understand it very well and I can also count. And I'm looking at the numbers here in October and it's going to be close and it shouldn't be that way.
Then, yeah, I'm not going to disagree. We've, we've, we've been close for the last twenty years.
And, but, but you didn't have, the, all the spending at the end of the year doesn't have to happen. We could have ended the year pretty decent and, and had a real plan going into the next year.
Four point five million a quarter, forty-nine thousand dollars in a day to operate the general fund.
Decisions about hiring and all kinds of things and, you know, again, making deals to hire their friends and all this stuff. And nobody pays attention to the budget. And I am not going to argue, I'm done for tonight. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing. If, if we looked at the, uh, capital, uh, reserve fund, it's at a one point nine million dollars, so it, it's, it's going up from twenty-four, but, but not, not a lot. But if you look at what happened in twenty-two and twenty-three, it was four million dollars. So the person that is talking about, uh, you know, problems with the budget, handled the budget in, in twenty-two and twenty-three. And when this board was seated in twenty-four, because they're two-year cycles, that four million was about one point eight. So we're on the right track. I, I agree that there's work to do, but you can see that we're improving. But we're really put in, in a tight spot. And the reason the budget is tight is because we didn't keep the four million dollar reserve that we had. If you look at the reports, we had it in eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. It was paid back in, in twenty-two, but by twenty-three, so much money was spent, it doesn't go on there. And I just say, numbers do not lie.
We were too busy cleaning up your two million dollar wreck that you gave us summer one.
No, you caused the two million.
No, you caused it and I can show you twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And secondly, Commissioner Connolly, you, in that year when we created the stormwater board, you made it possible for money to automatically come out of stormwater into the general fund when stormwater projects came out. And then you went and you overspent on projects. You did projects without even counting. You went looking for ma, for projects, uh, for grants and you didn't even have the matching funds. So if you really want to know the truth, if people really want to know the truth and dig deep, it's easy to figure out who the problem is and it's sitting right to my left, my immediate left.
Sorry, Commissioner, back to you.
Yeah. My concern is a lot of what, the same as what was just stated a little bit ago. I have, I have a lot of concerns. I have been having the concerns. That's why I was looking for us to just try to have forensic audit done, which we found out the cost of that, okay? Uh, we do need a serious audit though, I believe. Uh, I'm kind of curious really where we'd be if we wouldn't, I, we, I didn't do it and I know Commissioner Zubek didn't do it. But the cost sharing with the sewer authority. And that, that's another thing that I'm thinking about. I, I'm cunning. As a sitting commissioner, why do I have to do right to know to get the budget? That should be one line for the public, for the sewer authority. I'd like to know because I, I just thought about that and I'm just like.
Well, we're going to have to go right to know. It's online.
You have it online. Is that what you're telling?
You got a copy when you, is it on the line?
It is online now.
Yeah, and, and then you got, you got, you got. Yeah, hold on. You got, you got a copy when you came to the sewer board meeting. I looked over to the solicitor and then sewer board. Yes, I did, you did.
I didn't, I didn't.
I said, I said to Steve when we were doing budget, can he have a copy? And he said, yeah.
No, I didn't.
And I think you've got a copy too.
Excuse me. I was not giving one. He was giving one. I was not.
For last year, we're on the track.
So, look, I'm not here to argue. I'm not trying. So, look, I'm not here to argue. I'm not trying to argue. But I shouldn't have to do a right to know for something that simple. And I do have concerns, same as Commissioner Zubek, with our financial status and how money has been transferred around. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
These general statements are just, just, are sickening because you have no clue.
Okay.
When it comes, that's, that's what it comes down to. You actually have no clue.
You know?
You don't. You actually have no clue. Explain, explain the treasures report. You can't. Explain the budget. You can't.
I think I just explained the treasures report.
I'm not gonna talk to you. I'm not, I'm not talking to you. And, and I'm not being disingenuous, but.
Are you being?
That's very disrespectful.
The problem is you come up here and you make these general statements when you, you don't pay attention. You just voted for five highway officials, five highways, five highway positions, and you never looked at the budget to see what it cost. What did it cost?
We need to have employees to be able to handle responsibilities for the residents.
You're concerned about the money. What was one position for highway? How much does it cost them?
We need, we need to have.
What did it cost us since you know what's going on? What did it cost us?
You know, I'm not the chair of finance. You ain't.
Hundred forty-one thousand dollars per position.
Excuse me. You asked me.
So if it was a hundred forty-one thousand dollars position, how much did you authorize to spend without even looking at the budget?
Honestly, can we just, can we just?
You're a joke. That's a joke.
I think it's very disrespectful, Commissioner Steele, for you to sit up here and call people a joke. And honestly, you know what? People are sick of your bullying tactics. You know, you sat up here at the last meeting and you insulted a resident that was standing at the podium. You called people, you know, what is, what was the word he called you, Mr. Connolly?
I called him a coward.
He, you called him a coward. You know, honestly, the only one that should be, you know, I think that it's very cowardly to sit up here and bully people and call people names. And I think it's very unbecoming.
I'll defend the volunteer firefighters every day of the week.
Well, we, we, we love our firefighters. So you don't have to defend them with me. But what you can do is have more respect for people because it's very unbecoming, a public servant, to sit up here and call residents who simply have an opinion, a coward, and leave people's jobs alone too.
Who? When I had somebody's job? What are you talking about?
Well, there was a statement on Facebook that somebody went after someone's job because they had comments like.
Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call vote, please?
I know you're in an election, but my God.
No.
To, to approve the treasures report.
Yep.
Commissioner Taki?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubek?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele? President Ellis?
Yes. All right. Thirteen, the solicitor's report.
Excuse you? You know?
I'm leaving off anyway.
Probably good. We probably brought you over your report.
No report.
There you go.
Uh, the solicitor provided information last night at the, this, this is a separate audience. So um, we had information that was requested by members of the public and the commissioners uh, related to um, the potential revenue of data centers. And uh, Director Golden, um, it was, it was brief. I'm assuming he got it from, from you. And he uh covered that a little bit last night. But because it's a separate audience, separate, I mean, I know you already did the work on it and your report was already delivered, but could we do that in this meeting?
Yeah, I can speak on that a little bit right now if you want me to. Um, so we were asked to look around and come up with some very rough estimate figures for potential tax revenue with data centers. Um, so I, I do want to state clearly, this is just an estimate and is by no means a promise or anything along those lines. But if we assume that a data center uh, building has a fair market value of approximately seven hundred million to one billion dollars, and that there would be five of those buildings on a site. So when people say data center, some people might be thinking of one building, some people might be thinking of one site that's a collection of buildings. Uh, I'm just explaining how I came up with these numbers. I'm, I'm assuming a site with five of these buildings. So figure fair market value on that, anywhere from three and a half to five billion dollars. Um, there's some pretty complicated math involved from that point, applying the Dauphin County Common Level Ratio to arrive at the assessed value for those properties. Uh, but it's at about forty percent. So the numbers I just gave you, I'll, I'll stick with the one on the low end of the estimate. Three and a half billion, forty percent of that is roughly one point four billion in assessed value. Apply the township's millage rate to that, which is, the math turns into point zero zero three six four and change. And that comes up with about five million dollars in additional tax revenue. Um, if you use the high end of the estimate, it would be more like seven point four million in additional tax revenue. For one site, five buildings at a hundred megawatts each. Again, very rough estimates. Um, fair market values can change up or down, obviously. Every year, that common level ratio changes. Uh, we've heard a lot of talk about the township not increasing taxes, but theoretically that millage rate could change. Any of those variables would adjust that tax revenue up or down. But this is just an estimate of the real estate tax, not any uh, transfer tax when the properties are sold, not any business privilege tax, nothing else. Um, just a rough estimate, ballpark figures for pure real estate tax, general fund tax revenue.
And, and just to be clear, that's the property tax, which Swatara Township gets twelve percent of the total.
That, that, that number would be the township's millage only. Whatever the, whatever the school district and the county gets.
So, so the, the school district's tax has just passed eighteen mils. And I will give them credit. It's, it's the lowest, as far as I know. They have the lowest property tax that's under the office, school district does in Dauphin County. And the county tax is around nine. Um, so if we were going to get on the low end, five million dollars a year, um, the county would get uh, somewhere around twelve, twelve million. And the school district would be the big winner at uh, just, just say they're five times ours, even though it's, it's, it's probably closer to six. So they would get twenty-five million dollars a year from, from a single parcel of property in the township. Which that number's very close to our one point five and change billion total assessment.
Yeah, if the school district's millage rate is five times the township, you can take all those numbers I gave you and multiply it by five.
Well, I appreciate the, the work. And I, and I think um, I got some questions from the public. And I know other members of this board asked uh, for those numbers. Because we've been seeing those in places that have a potential uh, data center coming on board or um, other places that, that, that it's already happened. Um, mainly, I noticed it in the uh, Cumberland County news, uh, with the Cumberland Valley School District and the local municipalities had released some numbers. So, um, we're, we're not that far along. We, the golf course could stay a golf course forever. Um, we might not have a data center, but I mean, that's, that's um, a significant amount of money. So, um, you know, I'm not saying money is, is the most important thing, but we, we heard a previous speaker tonight um, talking about uh, economics of, of one parcel and, and the concern that they have there. So I just, I appreciate you doing the uh, the work on that. And uh, appreciate uh, Director Golden for putting it out last night because this might be some of the same, but the, the meeting, they had a similar um, concern, level of interest, and they had been asking that question.
I, I do have, I, I have an addition. First, I wanna thank you because I, in September, I did ask that question as part of my document that I provided. Um, but I would like to know, uh, when you say five buildings, I know, were you just assuming there may be five buildings? Is that like the average? Or is there an actual proposal for five buildings?
I'm not aware of any specific proposals. I was just using a um, reasonable guess of what a data center facility might involve.
Okay, all right.
To be honest, I, Zach could probably tell you better than I could as far as the size of the parcels available in the township.
One, it could be two, it could be five.
Sure.
So we would just basically adjust the tax rate possibility based on each parse per building?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? We are up to the fire services and EMS report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, talking to the police superintendent, uh, we asked if it'd be okay if we start reading reports from here so our backs not to the, to the residents. Um, so if anyone has an issue with it, we'll be glad to change. But we're gonna try it out tonight, see how it goes. So I'll present to you the September twenty twenty-five Swatara Fire Rescue Report. Uh, in September, we ran one hundred and fifty-eight calls for service. Uh, four of those were in Paxsting Borough. We responded to ten fires, forty-three medical, medical calls, eleven hazardous conditions, thirty-one service calls, nineteen good and ten calls, and thirty-four false alarms. We had seventy-three active responders with four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five staffing hours throughout the month. We had two hundred and thirty-four uh, training hours. And our average response time from dispatcher arrival was five minutes and twenty-seven seconds. Uh, we responded, uh, uh, provided mutual aid twenty-seven times and received mutual aid thirty-two times. Uh, outside responding to emergencies, uh, we were made active in the community. Uh, we participated at the Horner Park uh, movie night, uh, dispatcher appreciation gatherings, uh, that was sponsored through the County Fire Chiefs Association uh, alongside Rutherford Fire Company. Um, the uh, Paxsting Swatara Softball Chicken Barbecue. And we installed uh, one smoke detector for the month of September. Um, next month's list of uh, activities will be much higher as this is fire prevention month. So we are extremely busy pretty much every day for the next week and a half, visiting all our schools and daycares throughout the township, teaching fire safety. Uh, I'm also happy to announce that uh, one of our juniors, we had a junior firefighter, Josh, that joins um earlier this year. Uh, he's graduated. He has um, successfully passed his firefighter one last month. Um, and he has become a uh, live-in uh, member. And we also have, um, I think we have two uh, pretty active juniors, um, two, actually three. One of them's, two of them are, are fairly new. Uh, so I think we're doing pretty good in, in that aspect. And that is all I have for this evening. If there's any questions?
I, I do have a question. Um, we talked about the, the number of activities and events, and that October is one of the uh, months with the, the higher number. Um, it's not listed on there, but I know, I know last year uh, on the thirty-first, firefighters were out in the community. If, if we get a schedule of that or a rotating um, schedule, so then they set up some places, then move to others, or, or they rotated through. Um, I'd, I'd be interested in, uh, obviously, this is the last meeting of the month, but if uh, we could just, e- either just confirm that's gonna happen, and if there's specific areas or times. Cause I know from the Swatara Station, they set up at the uh, Horner uh, playground for a period of time, and then they moved somewhere else. And if we know that in advance, we can put that out on social media. Um, and, and I know it happened in, 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 you know, o- other areas of the township. That's just where I was at. And uh, I, I think they did like uh, a half an hour, and then they moved on. And it was a great, great community outreach all night when um, young kids are, are picking a costume that sometimes is maybe to a profession. We had uh, firefighters and police officers that were uh, like three foot high and four foot high, meeting up with uh, police officers and firefighters. And I know, um, the police department uh, was also involved in that. So if, if we're, you know, if we're just staffing and, and the police are patrolling, that's great. We know that everyone's gonna be protected. But if we designate the, the areas, um, my suggestion is that we try to pick an area in each sector of the township if we can. But also, um, not that everybody's held to the minute, but if we give a timeframe when they would be visiting and where they'd be visiting, uh, because we, we had quite, quite a good turnout at the one location I was at. Um, and then people took pictures and posted live. And then other people were showing up and they had moved um, somewhere else. So if there's, you know, not, not a hundred percent set schedule, but uh, let people know um, when to be on the lookout in, in their area of the township.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else? All right, we are up to the Police Department and Community Services Report.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone, again. I have the Police Department report for the month of September of twenty twenty-five. In the township, we had one thousand three hundred and ten calls for service. In Paxsting Borough, we had sixty-three for a total of one thousand three hundred and seventy-three calls for service. Our Part One crimes reported were a total of forty assaults, two burglaries, twenty-four larcenies, three motor vehicle thefts for a total of sixty-nine total Part One crimes. And just a quick note for the public about our uh, motor vehicle thefts there. One of those three was a moped that was taken from somebody's property. But the other two were actual motor vehicles uh, that were left unlocked with the keys inside the vehicles. So please don't leave your keys inside of your cars. And please lock your doors all the time. Our Part Two crimes, we have a total of three forgeries, fifteen frauds, one embezzlement, one stolen property, twelve vandalisms, one weapons offense, one sex offense, fourteen drug violations, three family offenses, eleven DUI offenses, one liquor offense, seven for public drunkenness, eighteen for disorderly conduct, and twenty-six in the category of all other offenses for a total of a hundred and fourteen Part Two crimes. Our monthly statistics, we had a total of seventy-two arrests, eight DUI arrests, sixty-two traffic citations were issued, a hundred and forty-one traffic warnings were issued, twenty-five non-traffic citations, twenty-three parking violations, nine foot patrols, and eleven school foot patrols. Our crime and call trends, in September, you can see that the Part One, Part Two crimes and the calls for service were all down as compared to the previous month, which is fantastic. And year-to-date, twenty twenty-five, all of those numbers are also down as compared to this time last year. Our Community Services Division in September had seven events and presentations, one enforcement program. We collected seventy-five point two eight pounds of unused prescription medication in our drug drop box, and we had six mix-up inspections. Our highlighted event of the month from the Community Services Division took place on September twentieth. Corporal Pokrop attended a chicken barbecue fundraiser at Walmart of Harrisburg for the Harrisburg Area Police Athletic League's annual Shop with a Cop program. All of the proceeds from the fundraiser went towards this year's Shop with a Cop event, which is held in December at the Harrisburg Walmart. Swatara Township Police Department helps with the coordination of this event each year. And we will have officers participating in the event in December. Our upcoming events, the township has a Halloween walkthrough event. The event provides a fun and safe environment for kids to trick or treat around Banana Park. Several dozen vendors throughout the local community participate by providing their own candy and giveaways for families in attendance. This year's event is scheduled for Thursday, October thirtieth, and it starts at six PM. Our trick or treat event is the very next night on October thirty-first, and that runs from six to eight o'clock PM. And we will have multiple officers out across the township and the borough to make sure everyone has a safe night while they're out trick or treating. The complete breakdown of calls for service are on the following pages, bless you, of report that's in your packet. And the entire report is also posted online and it's posted in the township lobby. And are there any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are up to the Public Works and Recreation Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll quickly run over the September monthly report. Uh, announcements for Public Works is, uh, we're beginning to prepare for our fall maintenance season. Um, staff is getting the trucks and the equipment ready for the upcoming leaf season. We are expecting that probably next week, we will send one crew to start collecting leaves. Um, and as always, we will continue to collect usually till about the end of the year or when the first snowfall happens. Uh, Public Works is still working on screening the leaves from twenty twenty-four. We're almost complete. Uh, we, we try and get the pad ready for the incoming leaves from the. Uh, we, we try and get the pad ready for the incoming leaves from this year. Uh, staff, uh, September activities, staff continues to grind at the, uh, compost facility. Um, I'll talk later, but we, we did complete, uh, the fall brush collection from September twenty second to twenty sixth. Uh, we have quite a pile down there to, to get ground. Uh, we performed the usual rout- routine raidment, uh, road maintenance, which include potholes, signs, clean inlet tops, and roadside mowing as time permits. As always, we, we continue our sweep, street sweeping program and, uh, staff assisted with movie night. Parks and Recs, um, announcements, they continue with the mowing and maintenance. Staff, Parks and Rec staff also participated in movie night. Um, staff oversaw and assisted with the installation of the park at Chambers Point. Um, the playground is, is now open. Um, I think it came out, uh, really nice and, and it's a, a nice playpiece up there. Uh, staff also put the playground mulch in all the rest of the parks. They made, um, repairs to the concession stand at the crest. Uh, the contractor has surveyed Bishop Park, and we're hoping that we should start to see ground being moved here in the next few weeks. And as Superintendent Stouffer always used me to the punch, don't forget about the Halloween walkthrough on October thirtieth. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right. We're up to item fourteen. Um, I'm gonna make the motion for the Central Dolphin School District Local Share Assessment Grant Request. Um, we have a second. Um, we heard the presentation earlier from Superintendent Terman. Uh, does anyone have any further discussion at this time? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One second for that resolution number fifty-four. That's gonna be Resolution R dash twenty twenty-five dash fifty-four. We have consideration of resolution, application of the Dolphin County Community Development Block Grant.
Motion.
Overland Park. A motion and a second. do we have any discussion at this time? Um, well, by way of discussion, I'll say that, um, this is an, an attempt to make enhancements to the site, uh, to make it ADA accessible. All right, hearing nothing else. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's gonna be Resolution R dash twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five. Onto sixteen, um, same thing, but for Crest Park.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. And again, for the public, it's the same thing. It's gonna have to do with ADA, um, upgrades. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that will be Resolution R dash twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six. We're up to item seventeen, approval of the Crest Park cost estimate.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. By way of discussion, we had a, uh, quote that was on an agenda previously. I do not remember which month at this point. Um, it was for, let me bring it up one second. The purchase of the equipment there would have been, I believe, around thirty, it was thirty-five thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars. With installation, it would have cost fifty-four thousand four hundred and eleven dollars for that piece. Um, we looked into, uh, another provider for the structure, and they're running a sale until the end of this month. So we were able to get a larger piece, um, for two thousand dollars less, which, I mean, we, we could have stuck with a smaller piece and saved money, but we were already prepared to spend fifty-four thousand. So, um, we, we got something that was larger and more substantial for the kids for that park. Does anyone have any questions or discussion at this time?
Um, I, I just wanna add that, uh, Intermanager Trafficka and myself met with the representative from the company, um, at, at the crest, and, uh, this is like an all-in estimate, but there was a conversation about some things that, that we can perform, um, with, with the staff that we have and, and supply some of the things. Uh, some of that won't be known until the equipment is removed, uh, whether there's a stone base. So, um, I, I would expect that the, the price will actually go down based on, um, some of the, the expertise that we have and, uh, uh, Manager Trafficka's, um, confidence in the fact that we can assist. But we wanted to have the all-in estimate just in case, timing-wise, we're, we're called away on, on other things or, or we couldn't perform it. But I just wanna say that, um, I, I appreciate the fact that it was a two thousand dollar, um, savings on paper, but, but I think it'll, it'll be significantly, um, more savings. And, uh, the, the piece there is damaged. Um, I had lunch at that park today with, uh, three children, and, um, we're looking forward to, uh, to the new piece going in. But, I mean, that, that's a, an underused park. I'm just gonna throw this out, except for the mailman, uh, Viola and Orkin. So it has a pavilion and picnic table where people like to eat lunch. And it has a, uh, full-size toilet, toilet there. And, uh, it, it gets used, so, uh, just wanna put that out there. I was shocked with the amount of cars pulling in there, so, um, but, but it, it, it's a beautiful park and, and that'll be nice up there.
Does anyone have anything else at this time? All right, hearing nothing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to approval of Ivy Ridge Park Cost Estimate. Second. Um, with regard to Ivy Ridge, this is to add swings, uh, to the existing park that is there. Um, Commissioner Connolly was more instrumental in, in this park, uh, than I was, so I'll let him go over.
Um, the, we're, we're approving an estimate tonight. Again, it has some things in there that we think, uh, aren't gonna be, uh, in, in the final cost. And then there's, there's obviously some, um, uh, conversation about that. Uh, and, and then one thing, even, even at the cost that's there, and for, for public, this is thirty-nine thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, it includes, uh, two, uh, double bays of swings. Um, that park has a small playpiece now. It has two benches. Um, this money has already been approved from a gaming grant where we got two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So this will start coming off of that total. It, it hits a couple of the, uh, the, obviously the, the swings were upgraded, the playground. Um, we, we were looking to add some seating and, uh, I'll just run through the, eventually there will be an addition on the, on the, uh, the bathroom building, which would be a concession stand. There will be a stage there. Um, there'll be some gates so that parking, uh, for events could, could go onto the field, but the gates will keep people from going on the field the other times. Uh, sand volleyball will be added. And, um, we're, we're looking at, instead of a, uh, a permanent constructed pavilion, uh, Manager Trafficka has, uh, looked at Pine Creek Structures to get, um, a vinyl, uh, basically a shade structure with, with a bench or possibly one that would fit a picnic table near the playground. And there'll be some handicap, um, parking and some additional parking spots. But, um, this will start a drawdown of the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. It is within the grant request. Um, and the, the bonus on this is if we do use this installer, there's a discount, um, on, on the pieces because they'll be, they'll be in the area. But the, the best thing about this is, uh, hopefully, once this is approved, it can, it can go to, uh, production and manufacturing, and it's something that we could possibly get in this year if the weather's nice. A- and the, the final thing that will be added there is a, uh, cricket pitch and connection to the, uh, mountain bike trail. So it's, it's quite extensive, but I wanna be clear, none of this is coming out of the recreation budget.
And then just again, also for the public, um, we asked the representative from the company to put in every single thing possible that could be necessary, um, with regard to installation and the costs. And with him, we already had a discussion that most likely not everything will need to be done. So this will most likely be less as well. Um, and with regard to the seats, um, as Commissioner Connolly said, there'll be two double bays, uh, meaning four swings on each bay. It'll be two separate sets, um, of swings. And we're taking into consideration, um, trying to be accessible, uh, so we do have, we will have some seats that, um, will be able to be used for, uh, potentially someone in a wheelchair, um, or, or with different, uh, accessibility needs. So try to be mindful of that. We'll have two tot swings and then one bay will be all belt swings. All right, does anyone have anything else? All right, hearing nothing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to i- item nineteen, appointments to boards and commissions. Um, we had a, uh, unfortunate opening on the Civil Service Commission due to, um, an individual that was on the board passing away. So we are required to fill that position within a specific timeframe, I believe thirty days. Um, so, uh, Superintendent Stouffer reached out to the alternates that we currently have for this board. Um, and Mr. Wayne Scott, uh, said that he was interested in going on, uh, as a commission member, um, rather than, than remaining an alternate. We do still have one other alternate, so, um, if we need to add any alternate, that's something that we'll do in the future. That's not something that is time-sensitive, um, especially given that we already have at least one. So, uh, with his recommendation, I will make a motion that we appoint Wayne Scott to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion at this time? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this appointment needs to be done by resolution, so, uh, we do have a resolution that's prepared. It just doesn't have the space on the agenda that says R dash, but, so this will be Resolution R dash twenty twenty-five dash fifty-seven. So we are up to twenty visitors requesting comments. If you have anything that you'd like to say, please come forward, state your name and address as well as write it down, and then you may begin.
Tom Erlich, uh, fifty, fifty acre yard. Um, now that we have, uh, acting Township Manager, I just wanna ask a question from, uh, an, an issue that bothered me from the previous one. Um, when I met with him way back when, uh, I was surprised that you had a policy where you could use a credit card for five thousand dollars and not have, uh, any receipts. Um, so I wanna know if that's still a policy.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure of that policy or what, what.
That was, that was under Fossilman. It was like, you, you, three, three or four years, you know? I, I, I asked him and he said, yeah, they could, they could just.
It's never been a policy.
I mean, that's what he said.
He might be talking about POs, maybe, but.
He might be talking about pretty favorable purchase on the credit card. Isn't that?
Cause, cause he said there wasn't, like, there wasn't even receipts turned in on some of them back then. So, I, I mean, mo- mo- most of you weren't on the board at that point, but I, I do know that was something that he, he stated, and I just wanna.
Deb didn't let you get by without turn on her receipt for a credit card. I can trust, I can trust.
All right, well, I mean, like I said, I, I have an issue with money things, uh, I just wanted to make sure that changed. And I was waiting until somebody was actually in the roll. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time? All right, we're up to twenty-one. Possible stormwater violations for investigation. If you have any, you can always submit them through the website. Commissioners requesting comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tuckey?
Stop being disrespectful. You know?
Can read in your comments?
I, I did want to, uh, Au- October third, unfortunately, lost a really good part of our community. Former Commissioner, Mr. Donald Horner Senior has, uh, passed away. Uh, he was, uh, active in the US Military Corps. Served in the US Military Marine Corps. Uh, was the former Swatara Township Commissioner. He was, uh, for quite a few years on the Dolphin County Planning Commission. He was the chair of, I, Tri-County Planning Commission for many years also. He was also involved heavily with Hatz, and I believe he was also the chair there too at one point. He served, uh, Friendship Fire Company of Bressler as chief. And he also served, uh, Citizens Fire Company of Oberlin. I, uh, fortunately, I, I knew Mr. Horner. And, uh, I'm grateful that I have had the chance to have known him because he was a great man. And I have, have a lot of respect for him. I appreciate everything he's done for our community over the years. And I just wanted the public to be aware that unfortunately, we lost him recently. I, uh, you know, I, I'm not gonna get long-winded with this. I mean, during the meeting, I mean, we stated plenty of concerns that we've had over the past few years, and it's still major concerns of mine. Uh, for anyone to say that we're not for the volunteer firefighters, that's totally not true. For anyone to state that we're not for our police, that's not true at all either. We are here to try to do the best we can for our community, and I believe every day I've done my best. And there's been plenty of residents that have reached out needing help with issues. And I've, not to pat myself on the back because I don't do that, but we have helped many people, and that's the fun part of being a commissioner in this township. I really take a lot of pride in what I do. And, uh, I try to have respect for everyone on this board and in the community. It's not hard to have respect for our community. But it's getting awfully hard for some members of this board. And I have been respectful throughout. And I would appreciate this, if something's being put out there about myself or other members of this board, that it's actually true what is being put on Facebook and other social media. I mean, I'm not gonna lose sleep over it, but out of respect, I would expect to have the truth out there and not a bunch of made-up falsification. Cause this is seriously getting old. And, uh, we'll see what happens in the near future, but I've done my absolute best for everyone in the community. It's okay. And I hope everyone has a safe trip home and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you back?
Uh, yes, I, um, I'm gonna thank Commissioner Tuckey for his comments because he actually, um, took a lot of the words that I really feel also in my heart as far as our community is concerned. I, I enjoy serving the people of Swatara Township. I know things on this board sometimes can get contentious. Um, I always try to push back on the disrespect because I don't think that there's any room for that anywhere. We all deserve to have a certain amount of respect, both given and received. And I always, uh, one of the things I was always taught from the time I was a little girl was, uh, one of the things I was always taught from the time I was a little girl was you treat others as you would want to be treated. And, um, and that goes for everybody who serves the public, not just our commissioners, but also the staff. I have high expectations for the way staff treats our residents. And I'm not gonna, I'm not going to ever, ever lower those expectations when it comes to public service because that's why we're here. So, um, and, and as Commissioner Tuckey said, we, I answer every call. I respond to every text. Um, sometimes I find that my email isn't always working properly. But when I do receive an email, I respond to it. And I would like to let the residents in Swatara Township know that if they ever don't, do not receive a response, please try to get in touch with, with me some other way because for a while now, I've been having email issues. People have said they reached out, but I never received. And I check my junk mail. I check everything and it's just not coming through. I'm not sure why.
Get in contact with, um, points off then.
Okay, yeah. Um, cause I did have one complaint and I would never ignore anyone. So, yeah. Um, so yeah, that's, and, and as far as, I, you know, I've said everything I had to say throughout this meeting. Um, I do wanna reiterate that I love our fire service. I started in our fire service when I was eighteen years old. Mary remembers. Um, I think it was, I started out actually, uh, running ambulance calls and then all of a sudden someone said, well, you can't be a firefighter. And I said, what are you talking about? And next thing you know, I stepped up to that challenge because everyone knows I always love a challenge. But, um, you know, it's, you either love it or you hate it. You either respect the service or, you know, not everybody is meant to go into a fire and not everybody is meant to, you know, roll a pose on the scene. I mean, I, not everybody's meant to sit up here on this board. People serve in all different ways and I appreciate anybody who serves in any capacity, um, because that's what our community is about. It's about togetherness. It's about community. And without people giving their time and effort, you know, things don't happen. Things don't get done. So I do wanna say that, you know, that is the most proud moment of, you know, what I feel I can give. And I'm happy when someone comes to us with an issue and we can get it resolved. I don't always wanna take the credit. I don't always go out of my way to take credit. To me, it's about someone coming to you, they have an issue and getting it done. I don't care who gets it done. I've approached commissioners on this board. I've approached staff. Any way I can possibly help somebody, that's what I try to do. Um, and then on, on another note, I just want to express my heartfelt condolences to former Commissioner Pat Horner and his family on the loss of his father, Donald Horner Senior. Um, I've had the privilege of getting to know both of them as a commissioner on this board. I've always heard great stories and thought very highly of their family. But it really was on this board that I got to know them and appreciate them even more so than I had before. Um, and, you know, people, we're, we're, we've lost quite a few lifelong members of our community that have really given their life to service in one way, shape or form. And, um, I'm, I'm especially proud of that longstanding tradition that we have in our township. And I'm always very, very sad when, uh, a member of our community like that passes. So I do wanna express my heartfelt condolences to the family, friends, anyone who knew him, um, you know, that there's special family that have dedicated their lives to serving our township and, uh, for that I am truly appreciative. And I'd like to wish everyone well this evening and, um, thank you all for coming out and I hope you have a safe drive home. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
Uh, yeah, I'll start with, uh, saying I'm, I'd like to offer my condolences to, uh, the family and friends of Commissioner Horner. Uh, he did a lot for the community and a lot for Swatara Township. The fire report that we, we heard tonight, we're still at about five minute, five minutes sixteen, five minutes twenty second response, which is absolutely incredible. Um, I saw the number of active firefighters was up to seventy-three. So I appreciate everything that Chief Everson is doing with the fire service. Um, I love the community outreach. And, uh, I, I think the firefighters, um, love doing it. I know today, uh, they were at Tri-Community Elementary School and, and we have a list of places uh, that they're, they're going to. Um, I'm hoping to be at the Paxton Presbyterian preschool. Um, when, when that presentation, um, takes place, I'll have two grandchildren, um, in that, uh, school on that day. And, um, today I had a, uh, eight-year-old goddaughter that, uh, was so proud to tell me that she saw Swatara firefighters at her school. And you ready for this? Wasn't a fire. So she was happy. She was concerned at first, but that was her, her response. Um, I'd, I'd like to, uh, talk about, uh, the, the incident that happened in, uh, Steelton yesterday. Unfortunately, there was a a shooting. Someone lost their life. Additional person was shot, um, possibly two. I don't know about the suspect, but the suspect then fled the scene. Uh, we're very close to the border of almost all of Steelton, uh, by the, the geographical layout of, of, of Steelton and Swatara Township. But this was also very close to the area that students who would be leaving the Steelton schools in Swatara Township would be walking. So, uh, I was notified by, uh, Superintendent Stouffer that there was an incident and, um, kinda updated periodically throughout that, uh, because I have, uh, close ties with students in Steelton. The calls started coming in about whether they would be released or not. Um, everybody that I spoke to was satisfied with the, the decisions that were made. Um, and those decisions were made, uh, with the final authority being the school district and the police department making recommendations for safety. Uh, there, there was no mix-up, miscommunication. Um, students were released when everyone felt it was safe. But I'd like to, uh, thank everybody that was involved in that, uh, especially, um, law enforcement, all the first responders. But also the, uh, the students, family and staff at the school for, for being patient. I've said this before, uh, those are our kids. They're part of our family. They're in Swatara Township a hundred and eighty days a year and, um, we, we treat them like we would treat our own children. As the, as the situation, uh, continued, and I'm sure many of you saw this on the news, uh, I was very proud of the fact that a lot of the cars responding. I mean, first of all, I'm proud of everybody that is involved in law enforcement. But, uh, it didn't take long to notice that, uh, there was a Swatara presence with the marked vehicles. If you, if you recognize our personnel, you could see they were on the scene. And, uh, I was amazed to see how close to, uh, an actual, uh, dangerous situation Swatara Township drone operator, Jack Harlacker was. Uh, to have a steady hand in, in a situation where gunshots were already fired and, and one person was killed is absolutely incredible. And it shows the value of the drone, of technology. He, he was the eyes of an incident. He could be up above on all angles of a house, tracking a suspect, keeping everybody safe. And, uh, I, I spoke to him. Uh, he was there for hours and hours and hours. And I just wanna correct some misinformation. Uh, he has access to a vehicle now. It's a two thousand and eighteen vehicle that was basically gonna go out of the, the prior service that it was doing. And we could repurpose it or we could sell it at an auction. Uh, it's an invaluable vehicle to transport the drone operator and the drones. Uh, Mr. Harlacker is a true professional. He gets paid a stipend, similar to the volunteer firefighters. Uh, I asked him how many hours he, he put in in the month. Uh, we calculated it out that he, he might make five dollars and seventy cents an hour when he's actively out protecting people, gathering information, doing surveillance. And I find it interesting that there was, um, pushback on having that position. He now gets called out on incidents all over the county and other places. Uh, we are fortunate to have that type of response, just like we're happy to have our, our police officers that are on task forces, um, incident response teams, tactical teams. Crime doesn't stop at the border and it's twenty-four hours a day that, that people are at risk. So, um, I can't, I can't thank everybody enough for, uh, the way they conducted themselves, um, during, during that incident. And at the same time, I hope we don't need those services anytime soon or maybe ever again. But I'm very confident when the, when the call goes out, that Swatara Township will join with the other municipalities with mutual aid and do what needs to be done. I don't know, uh, a whole lot about the, the incident, but, um, I also wanna offer my condolences to, to the family and friends of the, uh, victim that, that was, was killed and, um, hoping for a, uh, quick capture of the suspect. I don't believe that has happened yet. So, um, that'll put the community at ease. As a result of that incident, um, Steelton High Spire canceled school. Uh, for today, tomorrow and Friday. I think they were off Monday for Columbus Day anyway. But, uh, a, a lot of students are gonna miss valuable education time because of a, a criminal incident in the community. And it's, it's just sad. So we're getting farther behind. Um, and I hope that they, they do remote and can at least have, have some semblance of, of a normal, um, school day. Uh, on things that go on in the township, uh, obviously I wanna thank Tom Stouffer for, for everything that you do. Uh, it, it is greatly appreciated. Um, when, when I'm involved with other municipal governments and residents, we get a tremendous amount of compliments for, for both you and the department. So please share that with them. Um, Zach sometimes has to make decisions that aren't popular. Uh, it's been my experience. He's completely professional. And when somebody, uh, has an issue that he can resolve, um, he does when he has to uphold the, the, the laws, the ordinances, the things that this board and prior boards put in place. Um, he, he's very good at doing that, which is really a frontline defense for, for everyone. If, if you don't have, um, code zoning and planning rules, then you have quality of life issues everywhere else. So I know it's a hard job and, uh, appreciate, uh, wh- what you're doing. And you certainly have, um, my support. Uh, just going down the list here, Brit- Brittany, when, when it comes to, to, to the numbers and the questions, um, she does an incredible job. I do tease her about, uh, on at least one occasion, hearing her vote in the meeting. So it probably was for adjournment. So, um, so I'm gonna, she'll live that down. Uh, Kevin on a moment's notice met with a vendor out of Pittsburgh. Uh, we're having, we're having a late meeting on, I wanna say it was Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday. And, and the guy said, I could come up there tomorrow. Yeah. And, uh, Kevin asked the time. That person went around to multiple.
Tuesday and he came on Wednesday.
Yeah, um, multiple, um,
On Monday.
Playgrounds. And, uh, we're, we're well on our way to, uh, really changing a generation of recreation here in the township. Many of the parks were built in different time periods years ago. Um, many were, were built in the seventies with, with some money that, that came in after the, the seventy-two flood. Then there were some upgrades later on. And now we're at the point where we're looking at, uh, the new Bishop Park, uh, new Chambers Point. If you haven't been out there, that, that's coming along very well. But, but upgrades to other parks that, uh, piece of playground equipment has a, has a, has a life, how long it lasts. And, and the life of the playground equipment has, um, expired in the township and through grants and, um, kind of the value buying, we're, we're gonna be upgrading parks in, in every area of the township over a couple of year period of time. And, um, the, the kids that are coming up and the families will have something to be, be really proud of. That was always a knock once Swatara Township, that our parks weren't up to the standards of some of the other places. And we've seen improvements in the surrounding communities too, but we're, we're really seeing them here. Uh, as, as far as, uh, two, two of the, the people we had tonight, um, Mr. Sean Gold is always a friend to, to the township and, and he certainly deserved that recognition. He, he didn't, he didn't ask for it, but I, I thought it was worth, um, thanking him. Uh, and we appreciate that partnership. And the superintendent is doing a great job for, for our kids. And, and I know he's a great superintendent for the district and I'm happy for that. And he said he has a hundred and ten thousand population. I'm happy that there's a strong leader for the hundred and ten thousand people. But my, my biggest concern is the population here in Swatara Township and Paxton, that, you know, we, we consider part of our family. And I'm not saying that they should get anything that the other places don't, but at least if it's even and equal, um, we'll see some improvements. So I, I was happy to, uh, vote and, and vote with the board unanimously to, uh, help fund his program that'll improve education, uh, for, for, for our kids. Um, at this point, I'm just gonna wrap it up by saying it's not easy to be up here. Uh, we don't, we don't always agree. Sometimes when we're not up here, we have communications between each other that are civil and things get accomplished. So, uh, I just wanna say we're, we're in a, in a good spot for what I think is finishing out the year strong. And, uh, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and everybody that watches online. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Steel?
Thank you to everyone that came out and joined us, uh, in person here and everyone that joined us online and have a good night and drive home safe.
All right. Well, I might be long-winded a little bit too. I gotta, quite a few things I wanna say. Um, first I wanna offer my condolences to the Horner family. Um, I'll just highlight again, but the Halloween walkthrough is on October thirtieth at the Nada Park, beginning at six. Um, we still have availability for vendors to sign up. And if you're interested, reach out to Corporal Brandon Pocrop. And again, Trick or Treat Night will be on October thirty-first from six to eight. So I wanna wish everyone a happy Halloween and I hope that, uh, all the kids that go out have a safe and fun evening. Um, we know October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, so I've got some stats that I wanna go over. Um, one in eight women and one in one thousand men will be diagnosed with breast cancer, uh, in their lifetime. Um, when it's caught early, the five-year survival rate is ninety-nine percent. So it's critically important for people to, um, go through screenings and, and see a doctor regularly, uh, so that early detection is possible with regard to breast cancer. Um, October tenth is World Mental Health Day. Uh, and this year's theme is Access to Services: Mental Health in Ca- Catastrophes and Emergencies, um, which I thought was something that was fitting because this week is also Fire Prevention Week. Um, with regard to firefighters, they're at an increased risk of developing anxiety, PTSD and depression, um, and have an increased risk of suicidal thoughts. Uh, so again, it's extremely important for them to have access to care, uh, and access to mental health services. Um, and so I, I was looking back through, um, articles and things like that. And, uh, I saw that in two thousand and nineteen, uh, Swatara Fire Rescue became one of the first in the area to offer its employee assistance program. Um, so I wanna thank Chief Everson for that, uh, because that's something, uh, that is extremely important. Um, sorry, lost my place. Um, with regard to the World Mental Health Day, um, I wanna share that one in five adults will experience a mental health condition. Uh, twenty-two point eight percent of adults have mental illness and fifty percent of all mental illnesses develop by age fourteen. So these are things that, um, you know, we should be aware of, especially with regard to our children. Um, I do wanna share, uh, share some personal things. In two thousand and twenty-one, I was diagnosed with major depressive disorder. This was eight months after my son was born. In 2021, I was diagnosed with major depressive disorder. This was eight months after my son was born. Um, and it's something that I've struggled with for at least the last five years. Um, I share this to highlight that mental health conditions don't, it's, it's not something that you can see. Um, and it's not always apparent to people that are your loved ones as well. Um, because some of us are very good at masking. Um, and October is also ADHD Awareness Month. Uh, and another thing that is something that I was diagnosed with this year, um, and usually only think of ADHD. You think of hyperactivity, impulsivity, um, little boys not being able to control, um, themselves when, when asked to sit down. Um, but that's not how it's expressed in girls and in women. Um, girls present, uh, in a way that is generally internal. Um, so boys typically show signs of ADHD around age seven. Girls typically start to show signs around age 12. And their symptoms, um, can present in the form of forgetfulness, disorganization, daydreaming. Um, and one that's, one of the worst, um, potential presentations is being hypercritical of yourself. Um, there is a very high correlation between ADHD, uh, and anxiety, depression, and eating disorders, uh, in women that were not diagnosed as children. Um, I also wanna s- uh, share something that I, I learned today, uh, actually. There are six signs of ADHD that I wasn't aware of, and I don't know that everyone else is. So I wanna share this for people to keep an eye out if you start to see these things. Um, again, mainly with your children, because if they're able to be treated young, their outcomes are far better with regard to mental health than if they go through life and, and find out as an adult or never diagnosed. Um, so one of the signs is hyperf- focus on certain, in certain settings, but the inability to focus in others. Um, difficulty, uh, controlling your emotions, impulsive shopping, overspending, uh, addiction, and other impulsive behaviors is another. Um, time blindness or chronic, being chronically late, uh, being high-functioning, a workaholic, um, or someone that keeps extremely busy all the time. And the reason that, uh, individuals with ADHD do this is an attempt to keep your mind busy. Um, and then again, the being highly self-critical. So again, I wanted to share that, uh, for people, because these might be things to look out for, um, with, with your kids. Uh, and if you're someone that's experienced any of these things before, um, I just wanna say that you're not alone. You're not broken. Uh, your brain just may work differently. And with regard to ADHD, we just have a difference in our prefrontal cortex. So, um, if you have the ability to seek treatment, uh, do so. If you don't, because I know access to care is something that is a problem in this country, um, you can turn to the internet. There are lots of, uh, people that are leading in research, so there are things that you can read. Uh, there's also online forums where if you're someone with any of these conditions, you can vent with other people so that you can have some sort of support system if you, if you are feeling alone. So thank you for coming to my TED Talk. Um, that's, that's all that I have for this evening. Um, and I wanna thank everyone that came out to the meeting this evening, and thank you to everyone that takes the time to watch these meetings. And everyone that's here, I hope you get home safe. Um, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Uh, this meeting is adjourned at 10:07.